Your audio off please. We need it to be off. Well, that sounds much better. Thank you, everybody. Are we ready to go? Is everybody with us tonight? I think everyone's here, right, Madam Clerk?
I believe so.
Okay, let's get started then, shall we? Good evening, everybody, tonight at the Southington Town Council meeting. It's Monday, March 22nd, at 7:03. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Christopher Pulis?
Here.
Paul Chaplinsky?
Here.
Michael Del Santo?
President.
Valerie DePaolo?
Here.
William Dietzick?
Here.
Tom Lombardi?
I'm here.
James Morelli?
Here.
Christopher Palmieri?
Here.
Victoria Triano?
I'm here. Let's stand for the prayer and have a moment of silence for John DeMello, please.
Heavenly Father, open our eyes this evening to the truth and reality of every situation that we encounter. Give us solutions that are the best for the community for now and in the future. Keep your hand upon Southington and continue to make her great.
And a moment of silence, please, for John. Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. Oh, we need the flag salute. I'm sorry. Let's all stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Now you may be seated. Okay, um, could I have a motion on the minutes, please?
Madam Chair, I'll call Chris, please.
Okay, thanks, Tom. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I will. I'll second, Madam Chair.
Very good. Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any deletions, any additions? Very good. Thank you so much. Councilperson's communication. I just wanted to say formally that the town is saddened by the untimely death of John DeMello. He was the head of, although it started out as an unofficial head, but leadership rises and John was functioning very much as the leader of our veterans group here in Southington and he he was dedicated to every vet that was in town and he will be missed for sure. Any other councilperson's communication?
Madam Chair, Mike Del Santo.
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. My sentiments exactly. I've made mention of Mr. DeMello at these meetings. I've known John for years and years and years. I've served with him in planning and zoning 100 years ago. He's just such a great guy. Such a loss for our town. He helped my dad a lot with a lot of the veteran stuff. So just such a void that big shoes will have to be filled. I'm unsure how we're going to do it. So just so sad. It's very, very sad. So council matter communications. It is, the restaurants are now able to open 100% capacity and the weather's getting warmer, so please make sure we support local, all restaurants and all businesses in town. Outdoor dining is happening at a lot of locations. It's a little chilly when the sun goes down, but you know, Saturday and Sunday afternoons and throughout the week where it's nice and bright and 60, 65 degrees. So make sure we're supporting local. That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nobody has any other count. Oh, thank you, Chris.
I have a couple things. Thanks. Pretty brief for a couple of them. First of all, Vicki, I know it's on the agenda later, but I just want to let you know how much we appreciate you adding the diversity equity pool committee to the agenda tonight. So just, I know we'll talk about it later, but I just want to thank you for putting that in on the agenda. We really appreciate that.
Of course.
Second, I had the pleasure of attending the Board of Ed workshop on March 11th and the conversation was specific about the plans for Dernowski, Flanders and Kelly Elementary Schools. So that was just a preliminary meeting, but they walked through three different options and actually the Citizen This Week and consequently the Record Journal prior to that did a good job of laying out those plans. So if anyone's interested in seeing what the plans are, encourage them to look at the Citizen This Week, but it was a very informative session. So thanks to the Board of Ed for hosting that. I also, with many of you, had the pleasure of attending the Library Board Planning Committee meeting on March 11th. And just one thing that Chris, Val and I would like just noted in our minutes and I appreciate that they put it in the minutes there. We were given some legal advice and out of respect for the town attorney, we followed that legal advice. But it was about making comments in the public meeting, you know, of that, the library board because of the conversations moving forward. So again, I just want to, on our record, that we have some concerns with that. But again, out of respect, we did follow the opinion of the town attorney. And then finally, I'm happy to share, I received information from the Connecticut Justice Alliance and they're doing a series, Fact vs. Fiction, a series on Connecticut juvenile justice reform. So I passed that along to Chief Daly and Deputy Chief Palmieri. So I'm happy to say Deputy Chief Palmieri, I think, registered for all three sessions. So hopefully there'll be some helpful information, which, you know, is a state-run seminar and hopefully you can bring back some good information to the town of Southington.
Chris, will you be making that available for the council as well? That information? Is it appropriate for the council?
I think so. Sure, I can pass along. Yeah, I'll send to you, to you all what I sent to the Chief and Deputy Chief. How about that?
Great.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else have council matter communications?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Val, please.
Go ahead, Val.
Thanks, Paul. So yes, I just wanted to remind residents about the citizen feedback survey for the fire department. So it is on, it's currently on the town website and residents are encouraged to go on there and complete the survey. It doesn't take long. It's very easy to maneuver through and it will help the fire department to be able to, you know, kind of look at their strategic five-year plan. You know, it'll ask about community expectations, community concerns, maybe our vision of the, or what our vision is for the future, looking at their mission statement. So I think it's excellent that they're doing it and just wanted to remind people it's open until April 2nd, I believe, on the website.
Yeah, excellent. Anyone else? Somebody spoke? Yes, Tom?
Thank you. Before I start with my comments, I will, I will ask, while I'm speaking, that Councilman Del Santo, as Chairman of the Public Works, can you just pull the information on the March 28th hazardous waste, which is this Saturday? That's an important one.
27th, yeah, this Saturday. Yes, I'll pull it.
27th, so after I speak, maybe you could just give the details on that. First of all, I think periodically we hear these stories about Bradley Hospital and how great it is, right? I had the pleasure of attending Bradley Hospital this afternoon. My son had a minor accident and it was just a great experience. Drive five minutes down the road. We were in and out of there within an hour. So I, you know, I think some of us on the council have brought up our experiences there and made it aware to the public that, you know, if you have, if you have a need, you know, make sure we keep Bradley in our thoughts. And I was, I was very happy with the experience today. Next thing I want to touch upon is I'm partially guilty on this one. I signed up for the STEPS event last Thursday and I, life happened. I actually missed the event, but it was an event on internet safety for kids. It was geared for parents. My point for bringing this up is the public really should take advantage of the asset that we have in the STEPS program. They have different, it's not only, you know, drug awareness. It's different things like this, such as this internet awareness. So, you know, keep an eye on the STEPS program and thank you for them for doing great work for the, for the community. The next thing I would like to ask from, I would ask that we add executive session to the agenda. It will be for a personnel matter. I guess if it's okay, Madam Chair, I would make a motion to add that under executive session. We have real estate listed now. We would just have another item for personnel matters.
Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Jim. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? Okay, great. Thanks, everybody.
Lastly, Madam Chair, I just wanted to touch upon the issue that we all heard about, not last week, the week prior, I believe it was, but there was an incident in town that, you know, very unfortunate situation that occurred that I think, I think it's a positive thing. People are talking about it. What happened? How did it happen? Why did it happen? How do we prevent it from happening? I had the honor of calling the individual Gwen Samuel this weekend. We had, we had a great discussion and I just wanted to call her to show my support for her and tell her that, you know, I support her and I apologize that she had to deal with what she dealt with. It was an unfortunate situation. But I left the conversation with, wow, what a positive attitude she had and she is really looking to make positive change. So, you know, maybe at some point in the future Gwen will want to speak to the council or whatever, or I told her I'll support her cause and I think a lot of good will come out of this situation and, you know, there's a lot of negativity in the community. It's sad when these things happen because we hear the back and forth all over the place and it's just not appropriate and it's unacceptable, but I'm looking forward to a positive outcome and I was very happy with Gwen's conversation and I appreciate that. So
Thank you, Tom.
That's all I had for council matter communications this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, seeing that, sorry to interrupt, but seeing that Tom brought it up, I do have the information with the correct, the correct times for the household hazardous waste for this weekend. That's a drive-in property from 9:00 AM to 1:00 o'clock and the brochure is on the southington.org website, but it's the drive-in property. You have paint and things that you need to get rid of. Please bring it this, this weekend at the drive-in Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Tom, for reminding.
So get some of your basements and find some stuff around there, right?
Mike, the, all of the hazardous waste that they're willing to accept is listed in the brochure on our town website, correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair. There's a brochure and it has all the details in it.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mike. I see Chris Pulis' hand. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I listened with great interest last weekend, last, Matt, last meeting when you commented about the community meeting, town hall meeting. We're going to have special meeting on March 29th. And I was just curious, who are, like, which representatives and members of the General Assembly, senators, have been invited? And have we had any RSVPs yet?
Yeah, we had, we've invited all of our local representatives. I also invited Representative Pettit from Plainville. Representative Lenahan will not be joining us. She can't make it. She has another meeting that she has to be at. And so I've heard from a few, Rob Sampson and a few others. Tomorrow I will be calling personally. Sometimes it just gets pushed in the background, but I'll be calling everybody tomorrow to confirm or to find out how many folks are coming and our police department will be there, including the commissioners. So I will, if there, I will give you the final count probably by Wednesday, Chris, to let you know who is coming and who is not coming. Is that okay?
That's great. I guess I just have a couple of follow-up questions and maybe we'll have more information when you get back. But I guess my first question would be the rationale for inviting Representative Pettit, who doesn't represent Southington. If this is a town hall meeting, a community meeting, I'd be curious why he would be included. That's question one. I don't know if you have it.
Yes, and I, he, I'm sorry, somebody was going to say something. Somebody said something.
I was just going to say, I think in one of the, one of the examples that I gave, I think Representative Pettit had co-sponsored a current legislation that's out there today with one of our representatives down in Veach.
Yes. So that's what matters right now.
I see. I wondered, did you invite any Democratic representatives who were in support of juvenile justice legislation in the past or recently? You know, I, and I guess another question I would have is how many dates did you offer the representatives for this gathering? My questions lead to a concern that this is going to be a one-party conversation.
Yeah, well, that was certainly not my intention and that's why I was very disappointed that Representative Lenahan excused herself and was not able to come. I invited our representatives and outside of Mrs. Lenahan, our direct representatives happen to be Republican. You know, outside of going into the federal realm. So that's, that's who I invited based upon their district. Certainly if you would like to invite someone, we're, I'm very open to that. I don't have a problem with that at all. But it is, it is geared really for our representatives to answer questions from our constituents. And so that's, that was the rationale on that.
Yeah, I guess I it's a little disheartening that Representative Lenahan won't be available, that we didn't try to accommodate her schedule only because there's a lot of rhetoric about who's responsible for this legislation and it would be great to have a bipartisan conversation. I just wanted to
I would say this, Chris, I'm open for Representative Lenahan to come to a council meeting. We can certainly accommodate her. As a matter of fact, because my focus has been on this, the 29th, but certainly she is, she has a standing invitation to come. If she would like to speak to us about anything that she's doing, by all means. And if you know her personally and would like to extend that and just let her know that I made that invitation today, if there's a time where she would like to come at her convenience, we would welcome her here. Sure.
Great. And with future gatherings of this sort, hopefully we can find a time to get every one of the delegations together, same place, same day. Thank you.
Yes, I agree. Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? Yes, Paul? Yep.
Yes, I, Madam Chair, I had three, three items. The first one was I was speaking with a resident in town over this past weekend and we were talking about frontline workers and, you know, how we've really tried to give some shouts out to the frontline workers in the past. And one of the ones that he felt in the community was underrepresented was our, the folks who work in retail, grocery shops, stores, pharmacies, you know, and we wanted to be sure that they were not forgotten. And I wanted to give a shout out to all of those people who are working in all the industries who we go to every, each and every day. And when, you know, when the times were really bad last year and all of us, you know, we're looking for them to try to have things on the shelf. Want to give them a shout out for everything they're doing to stay, you know, stay at work and be there to support the community. So thank you. Second item is, I know we've all heard about, you know, the Merrick family. I just wanted to give a, Kev, everybody, please keep, keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Their family has been instrumental in our community for many years and during this time where they're struggling a little bit to, you know, to fight illness, it'd be great if we could all keep them in our minds and our hearts go out to the entire Merrick family. And then the last thing is, you know, I'm not sure if there was anybody else who was adding on. I know, Tom, you had mentioned that you had reached out to Ms. Samuel, Gwen Samuel, about the incident at TD Bank. But if there were no others, I'll just, I wanted to comment, you know, I had reached out early last week to, to a friend of Gwen's to find out, you know, how things were going, if there's anything I could do. And subsequently since then, Tom had, had informed me over the weekend that he had reached out directly to Gwen and I had raised my hand and said, you know, I think it'd be great if I had an opportunity to talk directly as well. I had a great opportunity to speak to Ms. Samuel and I would say, similar to Tom, I was very encouraged with her tenacity to turn a negative experience into a positive and she's committed to, to doing that. I was, you know, I would summarize the discussion as positive. You know, I called to lend my support and let her know that we can't accept those type of experiences in town. And, you know, I asked her point blank, you know, what can the town council do to help you? Is there anything you want me to bring back to the town council? I heard that she did not want to or didn't feel the need to come speak at the town council and she said she doesn't think she needed the town council for anything. She appreciates the offer for me to carry and offer to have her here or, you know, carry a request to have some action. But, you know, I would summarize her, her her discussion. She said she felt like it was an isolated incident and she's dealing with it directly and she's getting good feedback and cooperation on what to, you know, how best she feels to handle it with, you know, with the private industry. I did offer to, you know, since she wasn't going to attend, I offered to carry a statement from her if she chose to provide a statement and she said she was happy to do that. So if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I'd like to read a statement from Samuel. He provided to me.
Of course.
The statement reads, "Statement from Gwen Samuel, the president and founder of the Connecticut Parents. Dear Southington Town Council and the many great citizens of Southington, Connecticut, I felt it was important to write a brief statement to the many great people of Southington to acknowledge and reaffirm that in my opinion, based on my interactions with the Southington community, the disparaging and dehumanizing incident I experienced at the TD Bank of Southington was the culture of that individual bank, that individual bank branch. I firmly believe the individuals responsible for the disparaging treatment I received should be held accountable as well as any leadership that knew discriminatory practices were taking place in their bank branch and allowed it to happen by their silence." I'm not sure, pause, I'm not sure how many of you know that, you know, she mentioned she's president and the founder of Connecticut Parents, which is a a group that does protecting and advocacy for children education and advocates for school choice. So Ms. Samuel goes on to say, furthermore, on behalf of me personally and the Connecticut Parents Union, I want to thank Officer Laporte, who was very responsive when, when we inquired about a permit to hold a very small peaceful protest on the sidewalk around, around the TD Bank. He checked in with us and was on site to ensure safety for all. In addition, the Connecticut Parents Union has officially adopted the amazing students, future, future leaders of the Karen Smith Academy of Southington that we met during our ninth annual 'Tis the Season to Be Reading event in December of 2020. Madam Chair, I'm sure you recall, we were, some of us were there. It is extremely unfortunate that this incident has painted the city in a terrible negative light and we as adults must do better. In closing, I strive very hard to be bigger than this horrific experience because our children, students are watching the behaviors of the adults. We must lead by example. Whether we like it or not, our children are our future and they need us now more than ever to become one Connecticut during these unpredictable and unprecedented pandemic times. As adults, we must work harder and more intentionally to promote healing, unity and accountability while coexisting regardless of town line. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Paul. All right, anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Val?
Thank you. I, because it's been brought up and I really appreciate that Counselor Lombardi and Counselor Chaplinsky spoke with Gwen Samuel because it was such an, you know, unfortunate incident. I just wanted to let you know that we, the Democratic Caucus did put out a statement to Ms. Samuel. I just want to read it so that it's in the record, you know, for those purposes. So the Democratic Caucus of the Southington Town Council deeply regrets that a visitor to our town, Gwen Samuel, felt humiliated and discriminated against at a bank in our community. We acknowledge that this type of behavior simply should not happen and that it does not foster the well-being of people that live in or visit our town. As representatives of Southington, we believe that it is vital for everyone to experience a welcoming environment where all people are treated with respect, dignity and kindness when they are in our community. We appreciate and are thankful that Ms. Samuel is moving forward with grace and in her words, is looking for this issue to be resolved in a way that promotes both unity and healing as well as accountability. So on behalf of Chris, Chris and I, I just want to say, we also really respect, you know, what Ms. Samuel is, how she's handling the situation. And I just wanted to point out that to me, it is another indication of a need in our town for a diversity, equity and inclusion committee. And I think it shows the importance of having that committee. So thank, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Val. I appreciate your words. Anyone else? Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm really brief. I just wanted to say on the record that I feel terrible that Jen DeMello passed. I can tell you that he touched many, many, many people in town and out of town as well. He, early on, when I was elected to the town council, he invited me to a ceremony over at the Alzheimer Center and it was unbelievable what he did for those people. And, you know, there's a huge loss to the town. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Thank you. If there's no one else, I do, Chris, did you raise your hand? Did you want to add something, Chris Palmieri? I'm sorry, your hand went up. I thought maybe you were looking.
I really didn't, but, but I'm sorry, it was just
No problem.
But you know, while I'm, while I'm here, honestly, I just can't help but echo the sentiments for John DeMello. He
You appointed him. You appointed him.
Right.
Veterans Committee, yeah.
I'll tell you, and Mark knows, and what was his request for the Veterans Committee? He wanted an office in town hall. I went to the town manager. We made it happen and I'll tell you, you would think we gave him gold. You know, and why? Because he wanted that to be able to help more veterans in this community. So he really was an incredible asset. I'm very saddened by his loss and how those communities feel it.
Rachel Waki and Alex Ricadone are on the committee as well and I know they feel the pull to continue his legacy within this community. And so I guess we're all feeling the loss on that. I wanted to just add one last thing tonight. I see Mark Poehler is on our participant list and I wanted to thank Mark Poehler. He hosted a community conversation tonight at the Y and it had to do with racism and bias. And he started off by saying that we may be uncomfortable. It was a very powerful, I could only stay on for an hour and 10 minutes or something, but it was very powerful. My hope, and I hate to just do this to him from the, from the dais, but my hope is that the Y will continue with these conversations until such time as, as the people are heard. And, and also, you know, we're going to be discussing the diversity committee. Thus far, just for everyone's knowledge, to get everybody up to speed, this will be the third diversity committee that has been proposed. And so far, we have not reached a consensus. However, some folks think it's too wide, some thinks it's too narrow. Some are fine exactly with the way it is, but we will discuss it openly and we will come to a conclusion. In the meantime, as I said, Mark did a wonderful job. Assistant Deputy Chief Palmieri was, was at the meeting and many of the folks that are on our participants list tonight were also participants at the meeting. So I want to just thank you, Mark, and thank you, everyone, for making that meeting quite good, I must say. So thank you, everybody. All right, hearing no other council matter communications, I'm going to move on. Let's talk about the reports of our special committees. The first one up is the strike committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had our meeting on the 9th. We had a guest speaker, Liz Adams, who works for WCNH and she gave us some ideas. She's the local resident, actually. She lives in Southington. So she gave us some ideas about how we could really refocus some of the efforts that we've been doing with our campaign, which we, was very insightful and really, really good information. We did have Rebel on the line again and we spoke about the campaign and they were very impressed with the amount of clicks and likes and the amount of shares that they got with the campaign that they're running. We are pretty firm with them. We're still not convinced that, you know, the, you know, I think they, they get, they're holding a few things a little tight to their chest and we're hoping that they uh, you know, I think they they get, they're holding a few things a little tight to their chest and we're hoping that they can really open up and spread this out. They did change up the the website. There are new businesses now on the landing page. The site looks great. You know, as we all know, the video looks great. So they are working hard. They're very receptive to our input. So they're working hard to uh to roll out more on the campaign. Um, we also had uh Barbara Coleman Heckler from the Suddington Chamber of Commerce on with us and we are going to partner with the Chamber coming up in uh late May and early June to do some uh some um uh, like a restaurant week where they're going to focus on uh, you know, getting it out to the public to help our restaurants. The town of Suddington is going to partner with that as well. So um, you know, the Chamber of Commerce is a very important asset to the town of Suddington. So we want to show them that we are willing partners with them to ensure uh to help out their members and to help businesses in town. Um, as I mentioned earlier, outdoor dining is happening. There are some meetings going on uh with with regards to Lower Center Street. The only way Lower Center Street could uh could be closed like it was last year is if all the businesses down there agree that it could be that they want to close. So there are negotiations happening right now and more to follow on that. I did speak with Lou uh earlier today and uh we may be having another meeting in the next few weeks. So I may have more to report at our next council meeting. That's it for me. Any questions from anyone?
Anybody? I think you're off the hook, Mike. I think uh, no one has any questions. So that's good. Uh, Apple Harvest Advisory Committee.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. Um, Councilman Palmeri and myself uh attended the Apple Harvest um meeting on March 10th. Um, it was a relatively brief meeting. We uh did award the shuttle bus contract to New Britain Transportation, uh the trash and dumpster contract to CWPM, portable restrooms to United Site Services. Um, the minutes of the meeting are posted to the website. The sponsor, the sponsorship coordinator and the uh festival coordinator both gave reports. Um, and you know, there there's about 10 booth rentals, sponsorships are coming in. Um, and for me personally, I just, I it's a, it's a good feeling. We're, we're starting to see things evolve. Um, sponsorships are coming in. Uh, we're hearing good news on the on the vaccine and the virus. So it's from the Apple Harvest point of view, we're we're moving along.
Great.
Uh, right where we need to be at this time of year. And um, anyone that's interested in a booth or sponsorship can see our town website and uh you should see the link for the Apple Harvest. Councilman Palmeri, is there anything else that is worthy of notation this evening?
Um, Tom, very thorough. The only, the only thing I just add to that is for sponsorships especially now is the time because we're offering an early discount. So if you're interested in being a sponsor, um, you know, the earlier the better because uh, number one, you get to pick your spot for where you want your booth. Um, but also um, there there's a a percentage discount um for the sponsorship fee. Um, and then the other good thing, the other good news is we have a new volunteer coordinator, which is uh the coordinator of all our volunteers, which is kind of critical because as we know, that's what makes the festival so successful is all the volunteers that we have running it. So yeah, we're pleased to say that too.
That was Heather McDonough, I believe. So thank you to her for stepping up. And I think that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Tom and Chris. Um, let's go on to the sewer committee, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Bill. Um, it was a quick meeting, but one thing that I found incredibly noteworthy uh was that uh, you know, we've been tracking the sewer plant um progress. That's kind of been my biggest report. And really what I learned is that throughout this entire COVID, uh they have not fallen behind. Um, so they tracked their proposal and I I'm just so impressed by this. I don't have any like background in commercial construction. Um, but you know, I think a lot has to be said about, you know, our town engineers, um, you know, the sewer department, um, the the vendor they chose because really you know, i- if they had come to me and said, hey, we lost 75% of our progress due to COVID, I think some people would have, you know, accepted that, but they didn't lose a step. They didn't miss a step and I'm just so impressed with them. So especially Jim Grapone, who I think is on here, but you know, I'm very, very impressed.
Very good. Excellent. Uh, any other committees that uh want to give a report?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, self insurance.
Yep, self insurance is next.
Yep. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Pulis and myself, we met on Wednesday, March 17th. Um, and Councilman Pulis and I are going to split up the duties of explanation and summary for this evening. And I I apologize in advance because as has been the case with these meetings, they are a little lengthy. Um, but I'll hand the floor over to Councilman Pulis to to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Um, so I'll start with the claim update. We came in um still under budget, $453,000 under budget, which is 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 not common. Um, we are uh just under $3 million under budget for the fiscal year. Um, obviously, th- these uh, these numbers are a result of people not going to the doctors as they usually would. So when we but made these these budget uh projections, there wasn't a COVID-19 and um now we're 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 seeing a repercussion. Um, w- we continue to monitor this with our consultant. Um, we ask, we off, he says the trend is similar across all the other municipalities that are self insured. So um, we're just working to try to uh figure out um, you know, how to adjust for this as we budget uh for fiscal year 21, 22. So I'll give you a quick overview of that. A lot of numbers here, but originally in December, we budgeted $25,250,000 for self insurance. And we decided to use a million of the reserve because we're putting so much into the reserve. Um, we put uh 2.4 million in last year. So we said conservatively, let's use a million of that. We don't want to use it all up because we don't know if something's gonna, if there's going to be a spike in medical visits.
Right.
Um, in February, uh when we met, um, we lowered that uh, the budget line item to, we reduced it by $850,000 because we had more claims data. So we lowered our budget projection to $24,400, minus the million, $23,400. And so this month, we got more claim data. Um, and we decided to revise the budget projection yet again and we reduced it by another $900,000. So um, it was, it is now down to $23,500, minus the $1 million from the reserve. So we're down to 22 five, 22,500,000. That is just so, if you haven't been keeping track, um, over $2 million uh less than what we originally uh projected. So um, Mr. Lombardi is going to talk about, I keep referring to a million dollars use of the reserve fund. Mr. Lombardi is going to talk about um the language adjustments in our fund reserve balance and how we came up with that million and and how we're gonna, we're gonna reduce budgets in the next few years.
Right. Thank you, Councilman Pulis. And I would like to also uh state for the councils uh and the public. You know, there's a lot of numbers flying around even at our self insurance meetings. It can get confusing very quickly. So if anyone needs clarification, myself, Councilman Pulis, Finance Director Amelia, um Board of Ed, Business Manager Sherry, um can all assist. We also have an external um consultant who i- if we can't answer a question, we can go to them. So I just want to put that out there. And before I explain this, this policy, I also want to point out on the agenda, it's on for action for self insurance fund balance policy. I'm actually going to make a motion to table when we get to that point. Just because I want everyone to to take the document, take as much time as you need. We'll come back to it at our next meeting. It's not um, I think the self insurance committee would like to have it for its April meeting, but it's it's nothing pressing at this time. So basically, you you all got this, this um document in your package. If you want to refer to the document, the blue letters were added um modifications. Um, and and a big shout out goes to Joe Labiniak from the Board of Finance. He worked with Joe Spurgeon, who's our um, insurance consultant. So basically what this, this is, this gives the council kind of a framework to work off of. It's not, it's nothing set in stone. But as uh Councilman Pulis said, you know, the fund balance is very healthy. It's actually overly healthy. So we're trying to systematically reduce the amount that the taxpayers and the employers pay. We can't just keep having these numbers grow and grow and grow because although that's good from a um personal financial standpoint, it's not good for taxpayers or the employees. So um I don't know, i- if there's any questions, I would, I can take them now or we can wait for the next two weeks and and try to address them. But uh, I think it's, it's kind of a proactive approach to uh managing this um overfunding of the of the self insurance funds.
Okay, any questions? Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
I just want to echo maybe the last comments from uh councilperson or vice chair Lombardi. We, you know, we simply can't keep overtaxing. And so hopefully we have some action on that in the near future where uh, you know, we can we can start to rein that in a little bit. I I'm not sure uh if the professionals can help us look at uh, you know, what the future may hold. Um, it it doesn't seem as though, at least personally, I I, you know, I'm not going to go to the doctor twice as much in 2021 because, you know, maybe I postponed something. So I'd be looking to see what their perspectives are on uh, you know, what the future holds, but certainly I'd like to see us do something sooner than later. It seems as though we have a very healthy reserve and we should now be doing something.
Yeah, well, I, to address that, if if the, if COVID wasn't around, like Councilman uh Pulis kind of alluded to, we would be looking at a budget of closer to $25 million. Um, but because of the positive trend that we're seeing, we're, we're, we're projecting a an expense of 23.5 million and we are using $1 million. The million dollars in fiscal year 21, 22 is a direct savings to both the employees of the town and the taxpayers of the town. Um, and if you look at the policy, it kind of shows a four-year game plan of a million dollars, 750,000, 500,000, and then 250,000. As it stands right now, we would probably, if you look at the policy, we'd probably do a reset next year. We might do another million dollars next year and then start that four-year process again. But the the document kind of outlines um that scenario, but you're right. And I I think um we are addressing it as aggressively as we can, but also at the same time, not too aggressive because these numbers are are not going to last into the future. We are going to see a a spike at some point and we want to manage it as best as we can. It's not going to be perfect, but we're trying to do um, the best job we can.
That's great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I would say I'd just like to echo what Mr. Lombardi said. We've been working since like over a year on figuring out how to manage reserves and we've been consulting actuaries and consultants and finance managers. Um, and um, because our number one priority is to try to get it right in terms of budget and try to um keep taxes as low as possible. So um, we 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 will continue to to work tirelessly on the committee. It's been, it's been a lot of work.
Yeah, and sorry to keep, keep uh adding things here, but to Councilman Chaplinsky's point, trust me, we, I think we all would love to say, hey, let's take three or four million dollars this year and throw and put it at the budget and lower everything in year one. But as good as that sounds, all it's going to do is create a massive cliff for our budget and for the employees of the town. So we're trying to be as aggressive as possible um, while also keeping the the risks in mind. If it, if that makes sense. But like I said, feel free to take your time, get back to us and we'll be happy to discuss further.
Well, that was a good discussion and I'm looking forward to further discussion, especially as we approach budget time. So uh, as you say, we can't just take all the money out and and do with it what we want to, but uh certainly I'm looking for more money every place I can get it. I'll tell you. Thank you. All right, um, anybody else have any special committee that you want to just mention tonight? Okay, that's great. Let's move on to the town manager's report. Mark, um, I would ask you to make that announcement for May that I should have done, but I didn't and I apologize. So if you would just go ahead and make that announcement.
Correct. You all received a copy of the uh, the memo I sent out to my department heads today. This morning, I had a conference call with uh with Shane Lockwood, of course, who is Health Director, along with the other town leaders of our district towns. Um, we decided that uh, starting in May 1, we're going to give the chairs of all our committees the option to have in-person meetings. Uh, that being said, obviously there may be people who are still uncomfortable or residents are still uncomfortable or my staff that are still uncomfortable. So we're still going to give the option um of having hybrid meetings uh if if that's the case. But I think it's important. Uh, I spoke with the chairs, a couple of my boards, Board of Finance and of course the Town Council. And we feel it's important that we start getting back to face to face. Um, I know that uh you saw there that we are going to have restrictions, of course. Uh, this particular board, obviously, uh as long as the chair uh with the consensus of this uh of this council wishes to move forward, our our first meeting in May would be over uh at the Municipal Center. Um, we are set up and have been set up for almost a year to have the kind of WebEx hybrid meeting over there. So some of you will do not feel comfortable, the public who does not feel comfortable coming in. We have the ability to do exactly what we're doing right here, except this will be shown up on the big screen at the Municipal Center. So um, I think we're heading in the right direction. I do believe that they may, that may be the wave of the future, even after COVID is 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 hopefully uh out of our uh, out of our lives, that we still would keep some sort of hybrid system. So the public doesn't necessarily have to come in uh to our meetings and uh they can do this similar thing. That's why we spent the money. Uh, man, Mr. Chaplinsky, you know, the hours we spent over at the Municipal Center to get it set for something like this. So I know the Board of Finance is very excited to uh start moving forward in person in May and I hope this board uh does also. All the smaller boards, uh the subcommittees uh that use this building that I'm in right now, which is the Town Hall or the Municipal Center, that'll be open uh to them starting in in May also. Uh, I do, uh, I did tell my department heads that if you do feel you have a meeting such as a large public hearing for planning and zoning, uh, then it's probably smart to to do that in a hybrid or a uh, or even keep it WebEx because it could be a very large meeting. So uh, that being said, uh, I feel comfortable that starting May 1 that we start that process. And uh, as I mentioned, uh six foot distancing, uh everyone will be wearing masks except for persons, people who are speaking, but as you speak, you can take off the mask and then put it back on again. So um, we did get clearance for that. Uh, the other towns are going to be doing it in their own way, uh, but we're going to be starting uh on May 1. So I'll answer any questions on that part of it. And it's, it'll be exciting to see some of you in person again.
I have a question for Mr. Town Manager.
Yes.
I remember um during President Biden's um introduction of his secretaries, you know, specifically uh Dr. Cardona from from Meriden. They have an individual who runs up to the mic and cleans it after everyone speaks. Are we good? Have we determined who that's going to be from?
Yes, we 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 appointed the vice chair of all the boards to do that. So for this particular one, Mr. Vice Chair, you're all set.
I'll sign up, I'll sign up for that.
You have your own mic, Tom. You'll have your own mic. Very good. Thank you, Mark. I don't think there's any other questions. Uh, go on.
Okay, let's move, let's move on to the the next item, which I consider very exciting and hope you all do also. Um, we are starting our construction season. Uh, and I know Mr. Del Santo and his board hear this all the time, but the rest of you don't. Uh, so I've asked our Public Works Director uh to speak with you tonight as our plans for our major public projects that we have in place. And I do believe, Paul, you're going to have to share your screen with Annette. I think, is that correct, Annette?
No.
No, never mind, Paul. So Annette Turmquist, our Public Works Director.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the roads, what we've accomplished, what we have planned. And then we'll move into bridges. And like Mark, I find this time of year very exciting. I prefer construction season a lot more than snow season. Um, not that it was too bad this year, but anyway. Um, so last year we talked in detail about the road assessment completed by Street Scan uh in the fall of 2019. And I don't want to go into all that deep, all that detail again. You guys have heard it. But I just want to remind you that each road segment was assigned a PCI, which stands for Pavement Condition Index, and that's between 0 and 100. Um, between 0 and 10 is failed, between 85 and 100 is excellent, and then there are several categories in between. As a reminder, Suddington's overall average is 76, which falls into the good category. So um, last year in 2020, we mostly worked on local roads with PCIs between 37 and the mid 50s. Uh, we also worked on portions of three major collectors having PCIs in the 60s and those were Spring Street, Old Turnpike Road and West Street. Um, in total, we did eight roads of full-depth reconstruction for um 1.73 miles. We did seven roads of mill and overlay, either two or four inch, and that totaled 2.39 miles. We had estimated $2.92 million for this work and we actually came in right around 2 million. Um, so we saved quite a bit of money. Um, there's several reasons for this. Um, some of the four-inch mil- mill and overlays became two-inch due to existing pavement thickness. So that cut down on the, on the cost a bit. Many of the catch basins just needed new tops rather than replacement or reconstruction. We did get good prices from Tilcon off the state bid and also from our drainage contractors, which we bid out ourselves. And we also tried to do as much in-house work as possible, particularly last year, we did a lot of work with town forces on Winding Ridge. So we were able to cut down on the cost quite a bit. Moving into 2021, we are again going to concentrate on local roads with PCIs from 37 to the mid 50s. We have one very small section of a major collector planned. It's only about 400 feet of Atwater Street. But mostly we have five roads for full depth reconstruction for a total of 1.27 miles. These are Mark Drive, North Star Drive, Sheldon Road, Windward Place and Town Line Road. Town Line Road is our most major project this year. We're going to widen it and add a storm drainage. And much like Winding Ridge, a lot of this work is going to be done in-house. We also have five roads planned for a four inch mill and overlay for a total of 1.9 miles. These are Beacon Street, Douglas Street, Moor Hill Drive, Pedal Drive and Welch Road. The estimate for this year's road construction is 2.49 million. Since we did come in lower last year, I anticipate that we might be able to add on a few more streets, but we have to check a few things first. We're going to check out the pavement thicknesses to see if any of those four inch mills are going to become two inch mills. The catch basin conditions are being inspected currently. So we'll have a good idea of what's, what we're up against there and also I'm waiting to receive the Tilcon estimates. We also plan on doing $50,000 worth of crack sealing as we did last year. And I just want to take a minute to mention that the, the StreetScan process and the StreetLogic software have, have been just a huge help. I get it. A lot of calls from residents and it's very helpful to be able to say, you know, your road's not on for this year, but it's scheduled for 2023 or whatever the case may be. And even if it's, it's not on the schedule, you know, they don't always like to hear that, but they, they understand. I mean, having this unbiased, simple process to follow is just, it's really been great. So I mean, I know I thanked you last year for approving that, but I just wanted to take a second to, to thank you again for approving the StreetScan and the StreetLogics is real, it's really a fantastic tool for us to have in, in public works. Moving on to the bridges, we'll start with the Spring Street Bridge. This contract recently was awarded to Dayton Construction from Watertown for 1.85 million. AECOM did the design and they are also doing the construction inspection. The site works getting underway now with some tree clearing. The total was 2.91 million. That was approved in the 1920 capital improvement plan. This is part of the federal local bridge program, which means that 80% of the design, construction and construction inspection is covered and the town is only responsible for 20%. We have the Marion Avenue Bridge over Falls Brook. This is, this was designed by SLR, formerly known as Mylone and McBroom. We are currently going through the DOT right away phase. We are just about done. I'm hoping to go out to bid soon, but unfortunately we may miss this construction season because there have been some delays in the review process. This was also approved in the 1920 capital improvement plan for a total of 1,130,400. This is, this is covered under the LOTCIP program, which means that the town funds the design, but 100% of the construction is funded through CROG. And then looking a little further into the future for 2122, we have the Marion Avenue Bridge over an unnamed brook. The design is expected to be around 100,000, construction is around 658,500 and construction inspection 165,000 for a total of 923,500. This bridge falls under the state local bridge, bridge program. So 50% of the design, construction and construction inspection would be covered and the town would be responsible for the other 50. The status on this bridge is that we've filed for an extension and we're just waiting to hear from the state. But I'd like to get this design going as close to July 1st as possible, once the funds become available. The next bridge, I believe it's the last bridge I'll talk about for tonight, is the New Street Bridge over the Quinnipiac River. We would like to do and what got, what hopefully will get approved is the design in 2122 and then construction and construction inspection in 2223. The design is anticipated to be 342,000 with construction at 1,426,000 and construction inspection at 443,000 for a total of 2,211,000. This, similar to Spring Street, falls under the federal local bridge program, but there has been a bit of a change since Spring Street went through the process. And now 100% of the design is covered with 80% construction and construction inspection and the town being responsible for the other 20%. We, the status of this one is that we had a WebEx meeting a week or two ago with the state and we just need to get some paperwork in to start the design process. In addition to the big bridges, we have some smaller bridges in town that need minor repairs. Totalling them up together, it, it doesn't even equal $50,000, which would qualify it as a capital expense. So that will just be getting done and we will likely use lots of funds for that. Our basic plan is to tackle one major bridge each year, although we currently have a couple in the works, but that's okay. We will get them done. But that, that's what we've done. That's our, our plan. And if you have any questions or comments, love to hear them.
Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to just, first of all, you mentioned North Star. I've had the opportunity to go up and down that road recently and I'll tell you, the, thank goodness that road is being done this year. Those poor, poor folks who are out there, that's sorely needed. Annette, I just wanted to say thanks to the public works team, the highway department, your entire staff. You know, COVID has wreaked havoc on things, but your team has held steady. This winter was, was no exception. We had some pretty challenging storms, whether they were large amounts or unkindly amounts with, with, you know, rush hour traffic in school and things like that. But I would say you and the team rose to the occasion each and every time and, you know, sometimes you hear things in the community, but I would say overall the community was very positive. And, and I too want to just extend my thank you and please, please send a thank you to, to the entire staff for their, for their great work. I'm sure 2021 will be no different. So thank you.
Thank you. I will absolutely let them know.
That's great. Any other questions? Yes, Val?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Annette, just a couple of questions. As far as like some of these projects with state funding, have you seen any delays due to COVID or will everything work out okay?
The delays have been with the, the review, not even just the bridge projects. We have other projects that are at the state too. And we discuss this at Public Works every month. The delays are definitely coming during the review process. I'm not entirely sure why, because the DOT is still working. I know a lot of them are working from home, but we've definitely seen a delay on that end of it, unfortunately.
So it's, it's just something that you have to account for, right?
Right. And depending on the timing of everything, you know, it could push a project off a month or so, which isn't the end of the world. But sometimes with these bigger projects, it ends up pushing it off a whole construction season because we just can't get enough done in the time we're given, once we get all the approvals.
Right. And, and just another quick question, are there any projects that you see kind of on the horizon that we should be aware of that, you know, maybe we're not aware of?
Not necessarily for the roads and, and bridges. You know, I try, you know, when I, when I put together our capital, you know, to look outward in, in a five-year plan, even if I don't necessarily have the cost for it. I mean, just one example, which is very preliminary, but you know, the salt barn we have at the Highway Parks Garage, you know, that's going to need some repair or reconstruction. And I know I have a placeholder in there, but I don't have an estimate, you know, yet. So I do try to think of everything I can, at least in the capital and, and add as I, you know, see fit. But it's a good question, but for the roads and bridges, I think we have a good plan.
Right. We seem to be in really good shape with, with the roads and bridges, right? Great. Thank you so much for all the work.
Sure. Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else? Yes, Chris, Paul Mary?
So, and thank you, Vicky. And can you just talk a little bit, when, when we look at our roads and they're rated, as you very eloquently described tonight, but sometimes there's, obviously there's a reactive approach, which are the roads that are really, as Paul mentioned, like North Star, like that really, that really just needs to be done. But then there's also a balance of some roads that aren't deteriorated quite enough and it's more cost effective to be proactive with them. Can you talk a little bit about that? Because residents ask us all the time, well, why is that road being done when this road is worse? And again, I know there's a cost-saving measure to that and I just think it's important to share that with the residents while we're talking about roads.
Right. Um, well, I mean, we talked a little bit about that, that last year with this StreetLogics program that we have. It does recommend, and there's different parameters you can put in, but basically it, it rates the roads and prioritizes them for you. We do have a lot of roads that are in, in like the poor category and those are the most expensive roads to fix. And it recommends that we, we start with those. At some point we will catch up and we will be working on the roads that aren't as in such bad shape. And I mean, every year, all the roads deteriorate. But the hope is that, you know, the roads that need minor repair, they're not going to deteriorate to a point where you're doing a full depth reconstruction. And those full depth reconstruction projects, I know they got put off for a while because a lot of them are smaller local roads, you know, that are cul-de-sacs and it seemed like we were never going to touch those roads because it might only have, you know, six houses on them. But it's possible that those roads haven't been touched in 50 years. So they're really in poor condition and, and we just absolutely have to fix them. I have, and I can't remember how many years are posted online, but I can share it with you. I've laid out basically a five-year plan and, and you can see the process almost evolving. You know, in the beginning, you know, these first two years, we have a lot of full depth reconstruction and we have a lot of four inch mill and overlay, which are the expensive projects. But as we move through the plan, you know, like in year five, which I have in front of me, a lot of them are two inch mill and overlay projects, which are in horrible condition. And, you know, they're not the expensive projects, so we can cover more mileage as well. So, you know, I think, I think as we go through this, and it's a long, long-term plan, you know, we're not going to make too much progress right away. But, you know, I think we're on the right track and I think the program will evolve over time.
Thank you. And that plan is available and it's really, really helpful to residents. So I encourage any resident to go check that out if they're interested of where their street lands. And then, and then one last comment too, which, which again, I want to thank you and the highway department because there are some roads that maybe aren't within the five-year plan, but yet they have potholes, you know, maybe from the plows this winter and whatnot. And I know you do a lot of patchwork as well. So what's the best method for residents to reach out if there's, you know, a specific pothole or area that, that is in need of repair on their road?
If they just call the Highway Garage, they can speak with, you know, whoever answers the phone. If they want to ask for Gabe or myself, they can. I do, as I said, I get a lot of calls from residents asking where their road is on the list. And, you know, like I said, they're always disappointed if their road isn't on the list. But after a call like that, I will always send the patch crew out on their next available day and just to see, you know, what the issues are. If there's anything, you know, if there's a giant hole that we can fix and do the best we can in the meantime. I mean, that's what we certainly do. So if they just call the Highway Parks Department, we'll take care of it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Great, great. Thank you so much. Anybody else? Mark, I think that, I just want to add that to echo Chris because the, this new program that we've initiated, I guess it was last year or maybe the year before, it's still, it's a wonderful idea. And that because any resident can find out where they are and if they want to make a, you know, a little, ask you to look at it, you're always willing to do that. And so it makes a nice orderly progression for our roads. It's great. Thank you, Annette.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Councilman Chaplinski, I think, had his hand up first, so please.
Yes. Okay, Paul?
I'm not sure, Annette, if you mentioned it, I, I might have missed it, but the, the Spring Street at Queen is also coming up. I didn't know if you wanted to just, since that is something that's talked about quite a bit and I know that that is right on our doorstep now. So maybe you just wanted to touch on that.
We are very close on that and we are hoping for, to start construction in the spring. There was one final comment from the DOT, which was literally revising a note. I think we had it back in the same day, if not the next day. And I've been touching base with, with them every week, just asking, okay, can we get our encroachment permit? You know, it's, it's the last step. So we are, we are so close.
So for those people who are listening, that's the widening of the, well, the eastbound lane of Spring Street as it approaches Queen Street, right in front of the Plan B Burger and the Chili's Restaurant. So there's a right turning lane. So that's going to be huge. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, Jim, go ahead.
Good comment.
You're on mute.
I'm here, Jim.
Now still?
Good.
No, you're good.
A quick comment on that. I, I was just there tonight, actually. And I wanted to note that do not block the box is ineffective. And I, and I can't wait till you guys walk, hide in that spot. So thank you.
Very good.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tom.
Briefly, okay. I wasn't planning on bringing this up tonight, but since Director of Public Works is on and the town manager is here, I do, and it's construction season, I do want to share a conversation that I had with the town manager probably two months ago at this point. But I do want to say that I am in full support of the highway department building some sort of structure at the transfer station for, for the workers. I approached the town manager about that and was told that the, the money has been budgeted. I'm not sure if it was this year's budget or, or whatever. I'm not saying that it has to happen this year, but I, I do hope to see that project come to fruition. We have such a beautiful facility there and for the, for the workers there to be sitting in their trucks or, you know, out in the elements, I think we can do something at a relatively low cost to the town that will last many, many years. So maybe.
Could talk about that, but you're absolutely right, Tom. That money has been budgeted probably a few years ago. But Annette, I know that you were discussing that with, with your staff. So maybe just give us a brief update on that.
Yeah, I believe there's money left over from the original building.
Original design and construction, yes.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's in the $20,000 range. But no, I've been discussing with, you know, Gabe, with the assistant superintendent, what he thinks would be best out there. And, and it's on our radar to do something, you know, plan something at least this spring, figure out what we need there. But no, that, that money is there and we are looking into it.
Good. Thank you.
Very good. Also, while we're, while we're discussing this one issue, I did get a chance to use the transfer station on Saturday and the, the new system is, is excellent. So I'm happy. It was working very well. We're not using the wands anymore. They're using cell phones. And those of you who've been at the transfer station, it's, it's, it's a much better system than what we had before. So thanks to Annette and Jay Baker and whoever else was involved in that. But it was very smooth and I was there on Saturday. So it worked out well.
Okay.
There's no further questions with Annette. We're moving on to.
I just want to say, the second and third Saturday in April, we're going to have someone at the Highway Parks Garage doing, doing permits because they won't be accepted anymore after March.
Right. And I think we have an oddity because we're open, the last Saturday, we're open again this Saturday, right?
Yeah, it would have been closed two Saturdays in a row because of Easter.
So really our, our every Saturday started last Saturday then. Okay. So we, we used, we used to say it started in April, but it looks like it started mid, mid March this year. So.
Excuse me one second, Mark.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Did they say new permits go to the town manager?
No.
Line them up.
Yeah, they're, they're going to be lining up here as I give them out. The next item I have, Madam Chair, is, is a matter with the, it came from the sewer department, then to the sewer committee and Mr. Dietzick's board. And then it is an extension of something that probably several of you already remember seeing. It started back, I believe in 2007 and they're looking for a final extension running from last month through and including the end of February 2023. I know he's already been praised tonight, so I, I'll introduce you to Jim Grapone because, see, did, did you know Bill that he was on before you praised him so much? So I just want to know.
50/50 chance. I thought I saw his name.
Okay. All right. Well, Mr. Grapone, who's been involved in this since 2007. So Jim, why don't you give us a very brief? So Jim, why don't you give us a very brief update on it?
Thank you, Mark. Uh, good evening, uh, Madam Chair and members of the council. Uh, as, as Mark, uh, mentioned, uh, the original agreement was acted on, on, uh, January 23rd, 2007 by the town council with a five year term, uh, for special waste discharge, uh, for treated contaminated groundwater, um, at the former, uh, Smith Medical, uh, building. And in, uh, July, 2012, the council chair at the time, uh, Ed Polcock III was notified, um, by a mail mailing and a, um, notification by newspaper that the discharge permit needs to be maintained at this facility, uh, and would be discharged to our sewers. Um, so before you this evening is the second amendment. The first amendment was actually approved in February, 2016. Uh, at that time, uh, town attorney, uh, Mark Shoda actually reviewed the, uh, document, uh, before, uh, council action on, uh, on, in February. So, uh, this just as a matter of background, uh, is for, um, Smith Mc, uh, Smith Medical VOCs, which is, uh, volatile organic compounds, uh, are a special, uh, waste concern, uh, at the time. Uh, they, uh, that discharge being special needed to go to the Connecticut DEP. And prior to discharge into the town sewer system, they needed to actually provide, uh, air stripping, uh, before discharging, uh, to the sewer system. Uh, also at that time, uh, the buzzword was PFAS. And that was a special, uh, chemical of concern also. So they, uh, DEP wanted that, uh, removed as, as much as possible before the discharge. The whole point of, uh, the contamination was due to a chemical, uh, chemical room leak that they had at that time. And it actually leaked into the groundwater. So that's the reason for, uh, having the chemical come into the sewer system, which is not, uh, unheard of. Uh, on occasion, uh, you have a remediation cleanup at a, a gas station, for instance, where it's in the groundwater and, or in the soil. Uh, as they extract water, it is, uh, not uncommon for it to be discharged into the sewer system. Uh, the town treats the, uh, wastewater, uh, from a cost standpoint at twice the rate of a normal, uh, commercial discharge. So they're paying a special, I'll call it a premium for this type of discharge. Uh, because we do have to accept it. It's rather clean, but we do have to accept it, uh, for disposal at our treatment plant. So that's a little bit of a concern. So, uh, in closing, the new agreement is before you. Town Attorney Jeremy Taylor, uh, has reviewed it. I think Jeremy's on, on the, uh, on the meeting also. So I'm not sure if he has any com- further comment on, on, uh, what the new, uh, uh, amendment is all about.
No, I think Jim, you summed it up pretty well. It's just a five year extension through February, 2023.
And just, and just to continue on that, this, this agreement would coincide with the current Connecticut DEP, um, approval. So, uh, which is, um, as, uh, Jeremy mentioned, it's for February 20th, 2023, which is to coincide with the Connecticut DE, DEP permit.
Correct. The five year extension was to coordinate with the DEP that was signed, um, a couple of years ago. All right. Any questions at all, Madam Chair?
I don't see any. Anyone else have a question for the, for the town manager? I don't see any, Mark. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jim. Very good. Uh, town attorneys report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, tonight I just want to update the council as well as the, the public on some of the pending litigation that the town's involved with. The first one is, uh, zoning enforcement, uh, case involving the operation of a commercial business in a residential zone, as well as storing commercial vehicles over one town in a residential zone. We've already had one hearing on this. Judge has ordered us to go back and try to work with the parties, but we do have a follow-up hearing that will be, um, in the beginning of May. That's scheduled on that one. If we can't come to a settlement with, by the town resident. The second one is, uh, zoning board of appeals appeal concerning the ruling that the ZBA made that a resident was running a boarding house, uh, in a residential zone. So that's, uh, just very new right now, that appeal from the resident. And that's, um, pending right now, and that will be heard in late April, early May. Um, we have a number of, of commercial, uh, tax assessment appeals on personal property. So commercial personal property that are currently pending right now, that we've had a couple of hearings on that we're going back on for second hearings. Um, and you may have read in the newspaper, um, the planning and zoning has voted to, uh, come to a settlement with a contractor on affordable housing that has been going on for a little while in the town. So that is going to be something that an agreement was reached and will be settled in court and the, the appeal will be withdrawn. There's probably a numerous, uh, other litigation cases that I could speak of, but I just wanted to give you a brief update on some of the noted cases here. Does anybody have any questions on any of these at all?
I don't see any questions. Anything else, Jeremy?
That is it for right now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Jeremy Taylor. Thank you so much. All right, uh, we are coming to this section of public communication. Uh, just some little, some, a couple of ground rules. You'll have, uh, five minutes to speak. It is, uh, for town residents. We would ask that you would be respectful and we will be respectful towards you as well. And, uh, it is the custom, although it doesn't always do, go this way, but we try to withhold comments. So if we're not speaking to you, we don't want you to be offended. We just want to hear you and, uh, and your issues. And, uh, the other thing is we like to keep politics at bay during public communications. This is not a political forum. It's for the council. So having said that, I'm going to allow Paul Chaplinsky to, uh, go ahead and give an update with the folks. We're going to run the, the, uh, the computer first, folks on the computer first, and then we're going to go to the telephone. Is that correct, Paul?
Sure, Madam Chair. Uh, we've unlocked the chat function. Uh, I do have a timer set on my desktop, so I'll, uh, keep an eye on it for you. We've unlocked the chat function. So if anybody wants to unmute themselves on their phone, they can type in the chat function. And, uh, first come, first served.
Hi there. Um, my name is Mark Herron.
Okay, Mark.
Okay, so. My name is Mark Herron and I live in Southington at 408 Main Street. Thank you for letting me speak. My comments are about the LGBTQ events scheduled here in May and June. I am opposed to those events approved by the town council of Southington for two reasons. Number one, how these resolutions came about. The paper says the town council vote was unanimous in favor. If the town council is to represent at least the majority of the people, then are we to assume the majority of the people here approve of LGBTQ? I know that's not true. In fact, I believe the opposite. Most in Southington do not approve of the LGBTQ agenda. And therefore they do not want these events to happen. The LGBTQ philosophy is offensive to three basic God given concepts of common sense, moral decency, and reverence for the divine order. In the Bible, it says, God made his creation with two genders, male and female. And he gave us simple and good rules to act as male and females and to have a fruitful life with each other. But in spite of this, a so-called unanimous resolution was passed, which is false, representing, misrepresenting, and should be dismissed. And the events canceled. The LGBTQ movement is clearly disapproved and forbidden by God and Jesus as shown in the scriptures of the Holy Bible. The one book that we find out what our creator God likes and doesn't like. It's there in the book, easy to find. Now, whether you want to believe it or not is your choice. And how you act in your involvements with LGBTQ is also your choice. But this you should know, as God does not approve of LGBTQ, then neither does he bless it. And even more so, does he withhold his blessings from those who promote it and support it and sanction it and legislate it into the public square.
Mark, I want to just thank you for, Mark, I'm going to stop you because, uh, I want to thank you for coming forward and speaking on this. I think, uh, one of the things I just, and I, if that's all right with the council, I would like to add something in here. And that is, I think you're talking about a group called Southington Pride. That group does not have anything to do with our town council. What the town council did was we passed a resolution guaranteeing under the constitution that all people in Southington, no matter who they are, no matter, they may not, they may not have your religious beliefs or my religious beliefs or anybody's religious beliefs, but they still need to be treated equally and fairly under the constitution. Now you're talking about activities that a, a private group is planning to hold in Southington. They are, they are not, they are not using town property other than they asked for two things. Mark, please correct me if I'm out of bounds here. Uh, they, they've requested two items and, uh, and we, uh, are going to let them do those two items. But we are not, uh, we are not, uh, we are, we, uh, we are a separate entity. We do not have anything to do with the pride committee within Southington. And so, um, uh, all people have to be treated equally under the law and apart from our, our religious beliefs. Uh, and so I'm going to just leave it there, Mark. You can continue if, I think you only have maybe about a minute again, a minute, Paul. Is that correct?
About a minute.
More than that.
Well, Paul has the timer going. So, um, you're allowed to speak for five minutes. I think, Paul, how long did he have left before I interrupted him? I want to restate that.
I'm sorry. It was about a minute and 45 seconds, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. So Mark, I'm going to let you continue, uh, in this, but I want to make it very clear because some of your facts were not accurate.
Ben, can I make, can I make one record correction before you let Mark speak? This is Bill. I apologize. I don't want to make this a habit that I'm going to jump in during public communication. But I, I just want the public to know that since 2008, it has been the law of the land. Our Connecticut Supreme Court has recognized same sex marriage. So for someone to say, it's, it's the Connecticut Supreme Court, that is the law of the land in the state of Connecticut. You can't come here and say that it does, it's not recognized. It's not a Southington issue. It's a state issue. Our Connecticut Supreme Court, I'll say it one more time for the public, since 2008, has recognized same sex marriage. I, I'm not, I don't, I don't understand. I apologize. I'll, I'll defer, Madam Chair, back to you. I apologize. I just had to make, I had to say that.
I understand. That's, I understand. So we're, I am going to let Mark continue to finish his statement. I, I want to give him the accurate information and then, uh, we'll go on. So thank you, Mark. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm fully aware of that, but you, you as the town council approved of these two areas, the flag thing and the painting of the, you approved. That's all I'm talking about. I'm not talking about anything else. I'm not talking about re-legislating, um, gay marriage. I, it's not even on the issue. Come on. Don't waste my time either, you know? That, I'm talking about the two things. So look, in the Bible, it is shown that disobedience to God's laws eventually catches up with the offender with unpleasant situations that are to show the offender that they are wrong with God. And now they have a chance to stop, repent and return to God's laws. You council members now have a choice upon you. You can believe the scriptures and realize your resolution is against God, our Father, and quickly dissolve this resolution. Or you can ignore the spirit of these words and proceed on as planned. That would be the wrong choice and a sad day for all of Southington. Please take note and please take these words to heart. You should know that the vast majority of Southington does not agree with LGBTQ and does not want these events pushed upon us and made public. We who know God in Southington are striving to keep God's laws and want to continue in his blessings of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We want to live a godly life. We want to have the liberty to obey God's laws and we want to pursue the happiness that comes from being right with God. Don't spoil these blessings for yourselves and the people of Southington. Do the right thing and cancel the town of Southington involvement in these events.
You'll be blessed. You'll have to, you'll have to wrap now, please.
Thank you very much, Mark. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That, it looks like we have, uh, Dawn Gambaccini, Gambaccini? I'm sorry, Dawn, for, uh, if I got your name pronounced incorrectly. You can unmute yourself. How do I pronounce your last name, Dawn?
Yeah, Gambaccini. Can you hear me?
Gambaccini. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Dawn Gambaccini, 239 Hitchcock Road. And I'll say that, uh, the last speaker does not speak for all people in the town of Southington. But I am here to speak in support of the proposed diversity, equity and inclusion committee. I work for a company that, uh, has taken diversity, equity and inclusion very seriously. Um, there is an organization out there. It's called the CEO Action for Diversity and Inclusion. Uh, it there at ceoaction.com. They have nearly, uh, 2,000 CEOs and presidents representing over 85 industries and about 13 million employees, uh, uh, in the U.S. who are pledging to act on supporting a more inclusive workplace for employee, employees, communities and society at large. These CEOs represent companies such as AAA, Advanced Auto Parts, Bank of America, Carhartt, Cisco Systems, Delta Airlines, Cigna, Denny's. My point being is that these are a lot of companies that see the importance of learning how to do the right thing as diversity, equity, inclusion and inclusion are not only good for business, but they're crucial for both our work and residential communities. A quick Google search identified at least 10 towns in Connecticut that have thus far formed diversity, equity and inclusion committees in the past year, including Colchester, Weston, Durham, Greenwich, Woodbridge, Ellington, Cromwell, Bolton and Bristol. I'm certain there are others. Most of these towns are similar with demographics to Southington. Uh, it's not, diversity, equity, inclusion is not just a Hartford matter or a Bridgeport matter. This is for all towns. Um, I believe that these committees are a matter of if, they will be, uh, not a matter of if they will be implemented, but when. As elected officials, you have the privilege and responsibility of representing and acting on behalf of the entire community with the good of all the people in mind. With the proposal before you, you have the opportunity to show leadership and vision. It's time for Southington to prioritize the, the voices of people who have been underrepresented, under, underrepresented or marginalized. I hope that Southington will act in a unified manner and seize the opportunity to be leaders in the area of diversity, equity and inclusion. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure that we see any other names in the chat function. But if it's, uh, okay ma'am, we can make a call if there's anybody else uh, who would like to speak during public communications that's on your computer. You can type your name in the chat.
Does the chat is disabled?
Chat is disabled.
Let me check on that, Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh, Tom just posted in the chat test.
Yep. Okay. Now they're coming through. Looks like.
Jen Weisner, yeah.
So it should be working.
I unmuted. Is that correct? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me. I actually didn't intend to speak, but no one else is and I can't leave that gap. So I'm going to go ahead and do that. Uh, I spoke two weeks ago about diversity and my issues with the town's lack of diversity. So I'm really very. so I'm really very pleased to see that some action is being moved forward. I, I don't actually have a comment because I don't know what you intend the Diversity Community Committee to encompass. So, I'll be back when that comes, but thank you for moving forward with that. I do hope that it does address some of the issues. As it can be very clearly seen in our town, there is issues, and it feels like a lot there, these issues are being denied. But even just attending this meeting and hearing prior speakers, it's clear that, that there's a lot of things that need to be addressed, talked about openly in our town. A long time ago, I worked at Northwest Village School as a teacher, and we did a seminar just basically about boundaries between teachers and staff and how to prevent predators from working at your school. And one of the things that at the seminar was presented, there was a high school in New Haven that had in one year, two staff members that had sexual relationships with students. And they were like, why, why is this happening, this is horrible? And what they did was, in their interview process, they make a statement saying, "You are not allowed to have sexual in a relationship with students at our place." So, just the act of making it explicitly not allowed is something that can be helpful. So, I hope that the Diversity Committee will move forward with a statement explicitly saying that our town does not do that, that should be publicly posted someplace, and I apologize if that already exists. So, thank you for your time and have a nice evening. I hope I stayed under my five minutes this time.
We're off, thank you, Jen.
Madam Chair, do we need Ms. Wisner's name and address for the record? Well, obviously she gave her name, but.
Yes, could you give your address too? That's okay.
It's 160 Saddlebrook Path.
Great, thank you so much. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, it looks like there's a Jan Galati who is up next.
Okay, Jen.
Can you hear me?
Barely, Jen.
Okay, let me turn the volume up. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you faintly, Janet. Anybody else, or is anyone having trouble hearing Janet? Yeah, everybody's saying it's difficult. I'm not sure what the problem is, Janet, I'm the last person.
Go, go on with somebody else.
Okay.
Does, Madam Chair, does Janet Galati want, she can also use the call-in number.
Yeah, she's trying it right, she's trying to get in right now. We'll give her another chance. Anybody else? Paul, anybody?
There's nobody on the chat function, Madam Chair, did you want to try the telephone line?
Yeah, let's go to the phones and then we'll come back to Janet and see if, if we can get her in.
I don't know, it looks like Dave Falvo was trying to talk, I can't tell Dave.
I can't type in the chat box, it's still disabled.
Oh.
Yeah, well, if there's anybody who wants to speak that's on their computer, I guess they can unmute themselves and address, address.
But, yep, absolutely, let's make sure we do that so we don't miss anybody. Go ahead, can we call David right now?
Hi, hi, this is Dave Falvo, I live at 691 West Street, and I'm a member of the Southington Board of Education. So, I want to start off by rethinking all nine town council members for passing the LGBTQIA resolution last month. I think that was a positive step towards our town, for our town. We could always make our town more inclusive in welcoming to everybody of different sexual orientations and genders under the Constitution. With all due respect to a previous member of the community that was speaking, as a gay Catholic, I find it a sin to judge others. We should always love each other, no matter who we are or who we identify as because we're all children of God. And I'll end with that.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. Good to see you, as always. All right, Madam Chair, do we want to ask Janet Galati if she's on?
Yeah, Janet, did you make any headway?
Okay, so, Madam Chair, then we'll do, is there anybody else on the computer who wants to unmute themselves? And Madam Chair, for those who are on the phone, including Mrs. Galati, they can press star six to unmute themselves and state their name and address for the record.
Anybody, star six, and then just speak out so we know that you're waiting. Star six. Okay, I don't see anybody, Paul, anybody?
I don't see anybody, Madam Chair. I will say, I do see on the, on the dashboard, it does say, it is, there is a check mark that says, "Allow attendees to unmute themselves." So, everybody has the option to do that.
Janet, are you on the meeting? I see you, you're on your telephone. Did you do star six? Can we hear you, Janet?
Didn't accept me.
Oh.
Chair, we can hear, we can hear her, it's just very faint.
Yeah, if you speak up, Janet, we can hear you a little bit.
I'm gonna do my teacher voice, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Don't give me detention.
Oh my, well, to that now. I'm here really in support of the, the Diverse Equity Inclusion Committee. It's something that, can you hear me, Chris Pulis, you're, I see you doing this, okay. I left the meeting from this afternoon, Vicky alluded to. That was the community conversation, and there was much, much discussion about the need for our community to be, have awareness. Leaders to step up. This is an opportunity that was presented to not only the Department of Police and to our public school system, but I'm also very strongly asking you to do the hard work that will need to be done. I would be happy to be partners and support this in any way that I can. Does anyone have a question? A quiz? Did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your effort, Janet.
You need my address?
Yes, please.
Eight Doe Meadow Court.
Doe Meadow, yep, eight Doe Meadow, yep, thank you, Janet.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Hi, I would like to speak.
Yep, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Joan Hurley. I live at 123 Curtis Street in Southington. And I want to thank the council for the resolution on LGBTQ plus and Pride. I do feel it was a very positive and inclusive step. I do feel the prior speaker that was talking about Scripture did not recognize that God loves and accepts all and that Jesus taught us to love and accept all because we are all created in God's image. Further, I wanted to talk just a little bit about the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee idea. I, I do feel that it's important and that there needs to be intentionality regarding the makeup of a DEI committee if it has been, if it gets voted in. I think that the selection of a committee should be run by an outside agency, not necessarily a grassroots agency, but something that will allow for true representation on that committee by people of color and LGBTQ plus people and others. I do think that a DEI should exist with the capacity to advise, influence, and impact policies, procedures, and practices that are relevant to diversity, equity, and inclusion in town. The Southington Town Council and the Board of Education should work in tandem with the DEI before any votes are cast on any issue. So, open discussion about suspension rates of Black and Brown children, professional development for teachers, et cetera. And then, two more points, data must be provided to and utilized by a DEI committee to inform town and school district policy and institutional practices so that there's a twice-yearly equity scorecard to keep the spotlight on equity issues and dismantling barriers to opportunities and achievement. And then, ongoing conversations on how to eliminate systemic racism must be the overarching purpose of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. It would be a foundational collaborative and umbrella committee upon, within and under which all town institutions would consult and run. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan, appreciate it very much, thank you. Paul, anybody else?
Yes. Can I get a couple minutes?
Oh, there, okay, that's Bob over there, yep.
Yes, well, I would.
Bob, could I have your name and address, please, for the record, thank you.
Bob Ramos, 1578 West Street in Southington. First of all, I think you nine council members are doing a very good job here in Southington. I've lived here for twenty-five years or so. In saying that, I feel very uncomfortable with the LGBTQ status that you did the resolution on, even though it was those two simple items that were mentioned earlier. Marriage is between a male and a female. Plain and simple, it's very, it's very evident in the Scriptures, and I'm very uncomfortable with this because, and it's not a hate message, I just make that clear. The lady previously was very correct, God loves everybody, Jesus loves everybody, but there's a reason why He gave the laws that He gave in the Scriptures. So, you would not behave this way. How about if a murderer says he loves Jesus? There's penalties involved for the murderer, correct? And for a robber and for a rapist. So, God, I agree, He's a God of love, but He gives these rules for a reason. And I have to agree with the previous caller, Mark, in disapproving this. I'm very uncomfortable with this, and I don't feel right about it. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you very much for giving me a couple minutes.
Thank you so much for coming forward, we appreciate you, thank you.
Anybody else on the phone, Madam Chair, can press star six to unmute their phone? Madam Chair, if there's none, I think that's, that wraps it up.
Okay, hearing no further comments, we are going to move forward into old business. Item A, action on the wastewater discharge approval for 201 West Queen Street. May I have a motion, please?
So, move, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Val, is there a second?
I'll check on that, Madam Chair.
Mike Del Santo seconded it. Is there any other discussion on it? Anybody have any discussion on it? All right, we're, we're just going to do a consensus vote, is that correct, Mark? So, all those in favor of the approval for item A signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously, thank you, everyone. Item B, action on self-insurance fund balance policy. Tom, did you want to speak to that?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to table that to our April 12th meeting, if that's okay.
And Chris Pulis seconds it? Any further discussion on it?
No discussion.
On a table, that's right, I'll get the hang of it yet. Therefore, hearing none, all those in favor to table signify by saying aye?
Aye.
It looks unanimous to me, any opposed? Hearing none, we will table this until, I'm sorry, Tom, the date you said?
April 12th, our first meeting in April.
First meeting in April, very good, thank you. Item C, action on the Diversity Committee. May I have a, it's a table right now, and we're bringing, it was a table, we tabled it for, for this thing. So, okay, Chris Palmera, I see your hand up, go ahead.
Yes, first of all, as I opened the meeting with Vicky, I want to thank you again for keeping this on the agenda for this time. Just because there may be people on here, as you mentioned before, there were multiple versions of this committee. I'm sorry, the recommendation, starting with the, the version where you and Val, representing the council, worked with Michelle Lebron Griffin and Pastor Ron Brown. That was the first version, then the last meeting, we had a different version that you had presented, and now, of course, this is the proposal that was emailed to all council members and was in our packet tonight. So, I want to thank Val. This, this round, she worked with Michelle Lebron Griffin just to try to clean up and address many of the concerns that were voiced at the last council meeting. We think this, this proposal is pretty inclusive of, of the concerns that were raised, and we're very proud of, of what's before us. The major changes, just to, again, share with the public, after feedback from the last meeting, there was language added specifically to define, to define diversity, equity, and inclusion. And those definitions also further explain why all three are important. There was also language added about following rules and protocols and specifically related to the FOI procedures and requirements. So, that was added, and then there was just some minor language change as well to clean it up a little bit. So, we're really hopeful, we, we heard tonight, just talking in, in our opening about an incident that just occurred in our community, and, and again, as Val said earlier, that just highlights, it's just one example of, of where we have a need for such a committee. So, again, thank you for letting us bring this forward tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else want, wish to speak on it? Val, is there anything else that you want to say about it?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just really want to thank everybody that has, that I've spoken with, everybody that I've worked with. You know, I'd, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues on the council. I, I hope that, I hope that you're looking at this each time with fresh eyes, and I hope that you're, you know, really looking at it with the intent to, to do what is best for our town. I, I know we all have different opinions. I know it sounds sometimes like we're, we're very divisive, and it's, you know, these are, these are emotional issues. But I really think that this is something that we can show our town that we come together on, and we know that this is what is in our town's best interest. I've talked with a lot of residents, I've talked with a number of you. I've, I've worked with, as we said, Pastor Brown, with Michelle Lebron, you know, so, community members. And, you know, I think the bottom line for me is, I really think we, we can only have progress if we bring everyone to the table. So, it's bringing all walks of life to the table, all voices, let everybody be heard so that people feel that they have a sense of belonging and people feel that their voice is being heard. So, you know, I respect all of you on this council. I, I really sincerely hope that, Madam Chair, I reached out to you two weeks ago and said that I would be willing to work with any of the members on the majority side, you know, to work together and make this happen. And, you know, I, I stand by that. If there is anything in this proposal that needs to be modified that we can talk about, I, I think that's what we're looking for. You know, Chris, Chris and I feel it's an excellent proposal, and we just need to know where are the, what are the issues that, that you, you as a majority have with it? And are they something that we can, you know, come to some resolution on?
Thank you, Val. Could I, oh, I saw Mike Del Santo. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question. I've been working on this last couple of weeks and ever since, you know, Chris, Chris and Val sent out their proposal. I just have some questions or maybe some clarification. I hope you guys can help me. Where I'm getting hung up on is the equity versus equality piece. And I'm hoping that you guys could further help me to understand and I have, you know, turned into, you know, the internet search or the difference between the two words. And I have definitions. I think I need to know a little deeper than just definition. Why equity and not equality for the naming of the committee? Can you guys speak on that?
Sure, Mike. I think it's just really important to have, I don't think we need equality in the title. I believe the title should have diversity, equity, and inclusion because they are three different things. And equity to me, I know I've, you know, done some research and it's, you know, you don't want to just look at definitions. But equity to me is it brings in the fairness and the justice, you know, the fairness of everything. Something can be equal. You know, as an example, if people wear glasses, right, if people wear eyeglasses, everybody doesn't need progressive eyeglasses. And now, you know, that would be equality, right? We say everybody is allowed to have, everybody is allowed to have these progressive eyeglasses, but you might not need them. I might, I might need progressive eyeglasses, but other people may not need those eyeglasses. So equality is very different than equity. And I see equity as bringing in the fairness and the, kind of the justice. So I hope that helps.
Well, it helps a little, but can, in my research, can I kind of share what the council, I completely stole this. This is not me. This is what I've read and maybe it's wrong. I don't know. But my differences between the two words is for equality. Everyone starts with the same opportunity and must take advantage of it to achieve success. That's equality. And equity would be, would be, the benefits of hard work may be taken away from those who earn them and given to those who have not. Is that completely off base? And then another quote that I heard was, equal opportunity will never mean equal results. So, I don't know. I'm nervous, I'm nervous about the word equity. I'm just going to be honest with you. So, I mean, Chris Poole's question, but Madam Chair, I appreciate any feedback and any clarification that you all have.
Okay, Tom had his next. I'm sorry, go ahead, Val.
I was just.
No, I think she.
Yeah, the screen froze up. We'll come back to, we'll come back to you, Val. Tom, why don't you go ahead?
Please, Councilman Poole has had. Val, Val, excuse me, you cut off for a quick second there. So after Mike Del Santo finished is where I think you should start. Because you, your screen was.
Yeah, you were frozen, Val.
Okay, thank you. Is this, is this better?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, well, the question I have for Mike is, and maybe other people have, have the same concern that you do. Why does equity scare you?
Maybe I used the wrong word, scared. I just, I just, I'm not sure that I understand the difference between the two words. And I just want to ensure that whatever this council decides is going to be, you know, fair for all.
Thank you, Mike. Tom, you had your hand up and then I'll go to the rest. But Tom, you had your hand up first.
Chris Poole, please. He had his hand up, so.
Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Sure. You know, I think, you know, the reason why I support this committee is because with diversity, equity, and inclusion, it seems that we've fallen into being reactive to these things. And we're, as we grow as a community, we should really strive to be proactive about diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think, you know, I was thinking about this and trying to draw a comparison. I think about the steps committee. Okay, before the steps committee was formed, which was a collaborative community effort, we were reactive in many ways about substance abuse in our community. Steps was formed, experts got involved in, from a variety of different organizations. There was a structure to the committee. And now we have a very proactive approach. We have people bringing prescription drugs and dropping them off at the police station in collection bins. We have awareness, we have events, and it's effective. And so when I think of the diversity, equity, and inclusion concept, this committee, like right now, like in, earlier in this meeting, we had counselors raise their hand and talk about how they reacted and called Ms. Samuel to talk to her after an event had occurred. We talked about people making statements after an event had occurred. Where we should really be more proactive. We should really be have this ongoing effort to understand about diversity, equity, and inclusion in our community. So that we could prevent these types of incidents from happening. And that people can be more informed and we could have a better situation in our community. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Tom, we're going back to you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, thank you for all the comments tonight. And thank you to the members of the public who have spoken on this, not only in this forum, but in other forums. The one thing that I pick up when people talk about this issue is that we're dealing with dedicated people and passionate people, which are great. These are people that want the best for the town. And I think a lot of their intent is very good. But just hearing Councilwoman DiPaolo explain the definition of equity is the exact reason why I want to challenge the definition that was put forth. She said equity to me, and if we went around this, this digital room, we would all come up with a different definition. The definition that was put forth in this document says synonymous with fairness and justice. Well, we're about to set up a town committee and who's going to define what's fair? Is it fair that I give both of my kids two M&Ms after dinner? Is that fair? Maybe it is because I defined it. There's a major problem when we're going to have a government body going around telling people what's fair and what's not. Now, if you want to talk about specific issues, I think that's what we should be doing. And I think we should have that discussion on the council floor. And I challenge everybody on this call, everybody who's spoken. I challenge the assumption that we don't care about diversity unless we set up a committee that it's going to be nothing more than another layer of government. A specific example, let's talk about why we don't have sidewalks on road X, Y, or Z. Let's talk about why we don't have public transportation in Southington. Let's talk about these things. I'm willing, and I challenge the other counselors, I'm willing to stay till 12 o'clock at night for the rest of the term, if that's what you want to do. There's a lot of people that have said, there's so many issues in this town. And there are always issues. Let's talk about them. Why do we need to have another committee to talk about such an important matter? This is, this is where we don't need to set up another layer of government. And, you know, I heard also this evening on another call from somebody who I respect greatly. And I think with the recent situation in Southington, it is true. It's an opportunity to talk. It's an opportunity to lead. And these are things that don't just come up in discussion and go away. We should continually have this discussion. We should, we should be challenged as a council. The residents that spoke, let's bring these issues to the front. So I challenge, and I understand that there's a, there's a movement, you know, not just in this state, but around the country to introduce this, these type of documents. And the document put forth for us tonight is almost verbatim that other towns are implementing. I looked into one town, it was almost the same thing. So I challenge whoever sent this out to define fairness and justice. I mean, those are terms that, you know, we can get around, but they're hard to define from a committee standpoint. Secondly, the question I want to, I want to challenge is the fourth bullet point down on the first page under the charge category. It says, ensure equitable access to resources, programs, and opportunities for all residents. I could probably, I can figure out programs and opportunities. Those are pretty straightforward. You know, if we're going to put forth a library program, music on the green, any other town program, we want to make sure that that's available to everyone. What is an example of resources? What are we going to ensure access? How are we going to ensure access to resources? What's an example of a resource? I would challenge that. And then on this, on this last page, the committee will determine their own organizational structure. That's not how subcommittees of the council work. And lastly, the last bullet point, that's, that's not going to be acceptable because if there is a committee formed, it would have to follow all procedures of the council, just like any other meeting. So they would have to be public with meeting minutes and all that good stuff. So. And then lastly, on the equity discussion, are the drafters of this document okay with the fact that town salaries are different? Are we okay with certain people making more money in town, in town hall or Board of Ed, whatever? Well, I guess it's town hall. We don't, this is not the Board of Ed. But are they okay with government workers making different dollar amounts? Because, you know, if I'm making X amount of dollars and I work for the town, I don't think it's fair that someone else is making double or triple what I'm making. That's not fair and that's not just. So I will close with the, with the, with the firm opposition that there is a lack of interest in this. And I will challenge the people who want this, like I do, to bring it to the council floor.
Okay, Tom. Who else had their hand up? Jim Morelli, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Jim, your mic is, yep, go ahead.
How's that? We have discussed this on numerous occasions and we've unanimously not agreed in our own caucus on the topic. I wanted to thank Mr. Ramos and Mr. Heron for speaking up tonight. I think it's nice that the public takes the time to view, to rein in on these things. I'd also like to thank Ms. Hurley, who is a very good friend of mine, actually. I think she came up with a wonderful solution tonight. I wrote a little statement because this is a very complicated issue with equality and equity and a spin on words. So, under our constitutional law, we're all created equal. And under God, we are all created equal. Equal by nature, we are all imperfectly different in our own ways. We're all bound to be different. Advocates of equity, diversity, and inclusion on a political basis insist on its distinction from equality. Equality strives on uniform opportunities for all, but equity, DEI, insists on strictly defined buckets and categories of people. Equity insists that we be viewed by our characteristics and not by our character. To truly treat people equally, government must treat everyone the same. And so to push and define equity and diversity pushes categorization of people in a dozen or so categories. It is obtrusive to the liberty of their equality of all. The drive for definition and distinction is not a function of local government, and I don't think we should have a committee. And I, and then to further, I think an ad hoc group of whoever wants to be on that group is a wonderful suggestion. And I want to challenge Ms. Hurley to put that group together and to come to the council with productive things to look at. And like Commissioner, oh, sorry, Councilwoman Lombardi, I agree that we can spend our time on constructive things and not destructive things. Thank you.
Ms. Morelli would be happy to speak right now if I could.
I'm sorry, Joan, you can't at this point in time. This is only for members of the council. I'm so sorry. But thank you for offering. Is there any council member who wishes to speak?
Madam Chair, it's me again, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
So, you know, Jim kind of said it earlier. I think it's, this is an important topic and I want to make sure that we get it right. And we've talked about this now for three meetings. And we haven't gotten it right. But what I don't want is to throw something together if we are not all on board. And we don't, all the nine of us agree on how this committee should be run. And, you know, I don't want to keep kicking the can down the road. But I'm unsure that we're all going to be on the same page with this committee. And I think it would be a disservice to throw something together and have a committee go out and start work without our blessing from the nine of us unanimously. So I'm unsure on how to proceed because I'm unsure that we're all going to be on the same page.
Thank you, Mike. Chris Palmieri, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. So, Vicky, you know, I think back even to the last council. And even though we had a different vision for how to get there, we both agreed from the beginning of the need to address some of these issues in our community. And as you know, we formed the committee, you and I attended meetings together, you know. We saw that through to fruition while it was started last council. Thank you for allowing it to continue into this council. We got our report. And I think the biggest takeaway was that the work is not done. The work is not complete. And that, you know, we want to seek out input from other members in the community. So while that focus was specific to practices in the town, we got a report, I think we made some improvements with our hiring, with our practices. Specifically, we've heard great things from the police department, from our recreation department, you know. There was just changes made, I think, as a result of that. We also, I thought, agreed that that was the beginning and we need to take some next steps. So, I mean, if the biggest objection is the name itself, I think more the purpose of the committee, the charge, the structure, those are more critical functions than the name. And I understand, I hear, I hear the issues tonight. I'm also, I'm also wondering why, going back to the original proposal, because, Vicky, you and Val worked in collaboration, you worked together, and then you brought in two other resources in our community so that it truly was a collaboration. And, and again, this proposal just built upon that, that you were an author of as well. And tried to address some of the concerns raised from that initial document. So I just see the importance here. Tom, I know you, you actually represent us on the similar committee, similar in nature with the Board of Education, and represent the town council in that role. And again, I think there was some apprehension when that committee was first formed. But look at the tremendous asset it's been to our community, you know. And that, and that addresses mostly our education community, but there's a community at large that has similar needs. And, and I don't know that a town council meeting, and this is the proper forum, to have such sensitive topics being discussed. You know, so I do, I have some concerns with that. I think this removes some of the politics. And, Vicky, that was another thing you and I talked about, you know, back three years ago, four years ago, whenever it was, about removing any sense of politics from it and really trying to make systemic changes in our community. So I'm just confused because of some of those points.
Yeah. I'm going to reserve my comments to the very end, but I do understand, Chris. It has been in my heart for years that something, however, I will say this, that unless there's a consensus of nine people, we cannot move forward. How can we move forward as a fractured council? There has to be a consensus. I'm going to just let Paul, Paul, go ahead and speak.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And first of all, I think it's good that we're having the fruitful dialogue. So I think we're stepping in the right direction. So I don't, nobody, hopefully, nobody on this call, on this meeting is getting demotivated here because I think, I think we all agree that diversity inclusion is important. And maybe, Madam Chair, we should reserve some time. I heard Chris talk about the desire. to, you know, to want to come together and make this proposal inclusive of all nine counselors. Uh, so I think maybe, you know, Mike spoke, Jim spoke, I heard Tom gave some very specific requests. Um, and maybe, uh, Councilperson DePaula was, was, I saw her writing, maybe she was taking notes on that stuff. I'm not sure if the intention is at the end of this, say, yeah, okay, if you have, if, if we can't see the, 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 through the forest right now on equity, maybe we remove equity. Um, maybe we mo- remove, if, if things are objectionable to some of the counselors where we can't get over it, like resources and opportunities and determining their own structures and privacy confidentiality, you know, because we know we can't, these have to be public meetings. Uh, you know, if Val was the author of this, or Chris, I'm not sure who it was, are you saying that you're willing to remove those as, uh, as part of, uh, you know, putting a, a middle ground proposal together? Because we had a proposal, an, a, an original proposal, we had a second proposal from, uh, from Victoria. We heard that, um, the, the Democratic Caucus Caucus did not want that proposal. Now you have a proposal that you've put together that you feel represents your thoughts. So I guess my question is, are we willing to meet somewhere in the middle? And maybe we can reserve that, Madam Chair, um, for after this, but I'd like to just make a couple of points. Um, I do think, you know, we all have the, the best intentions and we do think that these are important topics. You know, I, I point, I, I think about some of the committees that we have in town, and I'd like to just point out a couple of conversations, you know? I did have conversations, um, with, with some folks in the community. Michelle Lebrino is on the, uh, on the call and has given input, uh, on some of this along the way, and I thank her for, for that. Uh, you know, some of the things that were in, in our discussions were, were referenced. Um, the Southington Public School Coalition, uh, the Pride Committee, STEPS, uh, Southington Women for Progress, all very important, um, committees and groups in, in town who are working towards similar goals. The Senior Citizen Commission. And, you know, disabilities, one of the, in my conversation, you know, we, we do have some good functioning things going on today. As an example, um, you know, Tom, Tom brought up the sidewalks. We had somebody bring, um, bring up to us that we should have sidewalks between Darling Street and, and Stop and Shop, and that we have gaps. Um, and you know, in my discussions with Michelle, you know, it was, this, this is not about one topic only. This is about many different topics. Um, you know, whether it's, uh, racial equality, whether it's equality for disabilities, uh, or equality for senior citizens, veterans. That topic was brought up through, through the Public Works Committee, the topic of sidewalks. We're doing something, we're looking at it. We might not agree to, to do it, or we might not be able to do it because of things that are in place, but we're working on it. Um, you know, it was mentioned in my discussion that, uh, that there's an issue with the post office and handicap access uh, at the post office right downtown. I'll tell you, I go by the post office all the time. I never dawned on me that, you know, that there's steps there, concrete steps, and a step into the building itself. And, and, uh, you know, it never dawned on me that, that, um, you know, that access there, I always thought that maybe there was access in the back, but there isn't. So I did reach out to the town manager and I initiated a, a request for change and he provided me the contact for the, um, the, uh, the Postmaster General, which I've reached out to and started the dialogue on, what's the answer here? What can we do? Do we have to make an investment? So I'm glad to see that some of these things that are brought forth are in fact making their way into the funnel and, and being worked on. So positives there. I'd also like to say that, um, you know, a, a couple of things. I, I too was familiar with the, um, CEO Action dot com. And an interesting there, it, it, it dawned on me because, um, you know, To- Tommy had brought up, or Michael, I forget which one, about equity. And, and I know that, you know, equity is not included in, in that organization's, uh, mission. So when you look there, it's diversity and inclusion, similar to the previous proposal. And I see that we struggle a little bit with defining equity. Um, you know, with, with all, all due respect, uh, to Councilperson, um, DePaula, you know, we can't, we have to be, we have to go into this, maybe, maybe defining this with, with the example of glasses doesn't open our eyes enough to what that means in the government sense and how government will affect that in a fruitful way that doesn't infringe on, uh, uh, you know, people's rights, provides an equal opportunity. So, you know, for me, um, you know, I heard, I heard somebody mention a little bit earlier, um, that they were glad, uh, I think it was, uh, Ms. Weisner. She said that there's lack of diversity in town, and she said, I think it was, the quote was, I'm not sure what diversity committee is going to do or work on. I think that there's a, generally a lack of understanding of what the charge will be or the specific things. And I think that's part of what, what we here as a council are not getting to. What are some of the things that we could work on and actually, um, have some influence and make some positive changes? And I'll, and I'll say, Madam Chair, it's an important, it's an important topic. I do think we have to seize the opportunity. I think we're on the doorstep. If, if we're not going to come to a middle ground on something that everybody can agree on with respect to this document that's in front of us, I would lean towards, uh, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Lombardi's suggestion. I think this is such an important topic that we can't let it go. And I would suggest that maybe to step us in the right direction, um, we should, we should have some standing agenda items a few times a year. I, I, in the proposal, it talked about report outs to the town council, uh, a few times a year. So instead of having a committee report out, why don't we have an open forum where, where residents can come and we make an agenda topic, diversity and inclusion? Let people come with their ideas. Maybe some people from these other committees can, will, will have ideas that should be brought to the council level. Let's get a few of these things on the table for discussion and debate. And maybe out of those ideas, we'll find a need for a committee to work on them. So maybe we step in that direction and let's hear some ideas first. Maybe we have some more tangible things to discuss. And then we talk about how do we tackle it? And maybe having a smaller committee or a larger committee at the time is the right thing. Maybe that will give us uh, the ammunition we need to feel comfortable about coming together and, uh, and working on some of these. Again, I think we have to seize the opportunity. We shouldn't walk out of here without, without making, um, some step in the right direction. I think, Madam Chair, if we put some, if we, if we hold a few meetings, uh, a year, and like Vice Chair Lombardi said, if we have to sit until midnight and, and, um, and hear many different perspectives, let's do that. Let's formulate it and let's then pick a few of them, let's work on them. And Madam Chair, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any other comments?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, yes, Val.
So thank you. I just wanted to, um, try to address some of the points that, that have been raised. Um, so at, when I say equity and I see that as fairness, equality is, is giving everyone the same resources. So if you're giving out resources, you're giving everybody the same resources. Equity to, to me would be distributing those resources based on people's needs. Some people need a lot of resources, other people don't need a lot of resources. So it's, it's a very different, it, it is a very difficult thing to understand, but it's equity and equality. So, so very different, um, perspectives. I think a false premise that we dwell into is that we believe that everybody starts at the same place. It's not a level playing field for everybody. So there are going to be people that, that don't have, don't start where I start. I have certain things that I have. And other people don't have that based on cer- on certain reasons. Um, so I, I don't know, Mike, maybe to answer your question a little bit, I guess I would just look at it that way. Equality is giving everybody the same thing, like I said about the glasses. Everybody gets a pair of progressive glasses, whether you need them or not. Equity is distributing those glasses to the people that need them. Um, uh, to get, Tom, you made a couple of points. You gave an example of town, you know, uh, town hall workers, what they make. Well, is, if they're, whatever their salaries are, as long as those salaries are not, they're not, someone's not making less um, based upon their race or their gender or some other reason, then that's fine. But you have to make sure that people are not being, the hiring practices and the, um, the payment is, is being made in a fair manner. It's not, it's not being made, you know, it's, someone's not making more, or someone's not making less because they are a person of color. Or they are a woman, or they are a transgender person. So that's, that's how I would answer your, uh, question about, you know, the fairness of town hall workers. I don't really see this committee dealing with something like that because we had the town policy, the town hall, I mean, the, uh, town diversity committee. They did such great work. They looked at all the hiring practices and they've done training and, you know, that, that's a great committee, as Chris mentioned. So that's going to continue at the, at the town level for the town employees, which I think is excellent. Um, adding in a layer of government, um, all of our subcommittees, every subcommittee, Paul, that you mentioned, all of them. Every subcommittee, all these great committees, everybody that's doing all this great work, those are all adding a layer of government. They're a subcommittee of the council. So this is, this is just another subcommittee that we feel, uh, if nine of us feel, and I think we do, we just are, are trying to find the language. We believe that diversity and equity and inclusion is important in our town. We want to somehow have a, a committee dealing with this. This committee could work extremely well with the Social Justice Action Coalition or the Soc- Social Justice Coalition. They're doing great work. In, in three years, the work that they have done, that I've learned about is, is just so impressive. So we need that same, that same type of work just to be done in our community. And as far as the committee itself, it, it will, it will be set up as other subcommittees are set up. They will, it will have, um, agendas and meetings and, um, when we say that it will just be able to pick its organizational structure, we just want to make sure that, that we have a diverse representation of people and that this committee could be very proactive and look for opportunities, especially opportunities to train us. So, so when you bring something up to say, let's let people come in, let's, let's open it, open it up to our council and we'll stay till midnight in our meetings. I'm happy to do that too. But we don't have the training to be able to, when, when these people come in or somebody comes in with an issue, we don't have the training to deal with it. We need training. So we have a, now we have a committee that could find some ways, um, some methods to, to have us do some training. So that when issues do come in front of us, we'll be better able to handle it. The incident that took place at TD Bank. If we had a committee in place, that committee could have come, could have come to us right away to say, here's a recommendation. Here's a recommendation of how to handle that, how to reach out, how to, uh, make a statement. What maybe can be done about it? It's, there, there's so much that this committee could do. So I guess the bottom line for me is, um, and, and Tom, just ano- another thing, your equitable access to resources, public transportation. But you know, equitable access to resources, there's a resource. If there's public transportation, let's make sure that, um, everybody can get to it. That's, that's an example. So, i- if there's small things in here that we can at least get to some resolution on, I, I do think we're a lot further than, than we, than we think we are. And we're not just throwing something together. This has been worked on since September. I think Vicky and I had our first meeting with Ron and Michelle. So this is something that's been worked on for a long time. And it's not just being thrown together. There's been a lot of careful thought that has gone into this. And I'm, I'm willing to make changes and modifications and I, I believe Chris and Chris are too. I mean, we, we want to see this happen. So I, you know, Madam Chair, I don't know where we go from here, but I don't want us to kick the can down the road and feel that we can put something on our agenda and have people come in and talk to us and that that's going to do it.
Well, okay, thank you, Val. Um, one, and one of the things, the difficulty in all of this is that good points are made all over. Um, everyone knows that my heart is to, uh, have some vehicle that we can hear the voices of the people that we have either through our lives or whatever have not heard before. We've never had to listen in the same way that we are called to listen now. And so, uh, I think we all agree on that. I'm not sure this is the proposal that we're all going to come in with. But I do think that there's a few things that I, I would like to see. The, uh, community conversations today, as I said earlier, were fabulous and they were done uh, at the Y with a variety of people. There was much wisdom from the people that, uh, that the citizens that spoke. There was uh, a great huge amount of, of knowledge and wealth within that. Um, and it was not, it was not, um, part of the town council. It was from a community-based perspective, and there was much that came from it. My concern with this particular proposal is that it's very broad. And there's no, if you're going to put something in place, there has to be a, a, a way of making it have teeth. Unfortunately, I don't think that is so in this specific proposal. I think, I think a proposal could come about in the future, but I don't see it with this. I think there's an awful lot of gray area. So, there's one of two things we can do. We can move to vote on this because it, it was tabled and we can vote on it. Uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm at, uh, I'm looking to all of you. Uh, it, do we, do we put it off? You know, I mentioned this at the last meeting. Um, Reverend, uh, Brown had contacted me when this thing started because he knew that we weren't finding consensus and I had a wonderful talk with him. It went on for quite a while and I really, it was almost like a pastoral care kind of conference because, uh, uh, I was able to confide in him many things. And then he said to me, you know, sometimes when we're working on a project, it's, it's for right now. Sometimes it's a no, and sometimes it's not now. So, um, I, I think maybe conversation continues. Uh, I think we owe it to Val and, and Michelle, both of who have worked very hard and on this proposal. I want to give them the credit on, on the one that's before us. Um, and, uh, I think it, we should vote on this particular proposal. Uh, not to close the door on future discussions, not to close the door on, on future ideas or suggestions, or even a community-based approach to this. Uh, but it is imperative that we as a council have ears to hear our people and what is going on. I think it's so critical. I, I, I don't know if this is going to pass or not tonight, but I think we need to make, we need to move on this tonight. So then we can go to the next step. It's, that is just my suggest. Um, is there any others? Yes, I'm looking, go ahead, Tom.
Before we make the, the roll, I, I do appreciate specifics. And one specific that came up this evening was public transportation. So I would make a formal request through you that the town manager update the council on the status of public transportation in Southington at our next council meeting. Um, and that's, that would be one specific area that we can at least begin the discussion. And, and I challenge other counselors to think of other specific items. And we can add them as agenda items as we see fit for the rest of this term.
I, I appreciate that, Tom, and I see the town manager writing notes down. Um, I'm, we do have, uh, we gave permission a, a few years ago to the state to do an assessment of public transportation here in Southington of a busway, right, Chris? We gave, we gave permission. Uh, because of COVID, I don't think anything's been done on it at all. Uh, but certainly, uh, Mark can, can look into it and see what's going on. That would be fine. Anybody else? I want to close it down. We're going to be here. We have an executive session. I think everybody who has wanted to say something has said something. Last call. I can't, I would love to, I can't recognize you right now. I'm so sorry. And I want to say thank you because you've been very, very good throughout the meeting. I appreciate it. So, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, there is, um, is there, are, are we ready to, to call the roll on this?
I don't believe there's a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make the, I'll make a motion that we approve the proposal.
And, and, and I'll second that motion. I, 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 I thank Val for her work and Vicky, you too, because you were, you were an original author of this. So I really think that there, there's been a lot of work from both of you. So.
Thank you, Chris. But there was a pending motion before. We only tabled it. So we're bringing it back on the table right now. So Val- So Val has made a motion to approve. Chris has made a motion to second. Madam Clerk, we need to call the roll.
Madam Chair, I think there's a clarification because
All right.
The motion, the motion that Val made is for the document that was sent before this meeting, which I think was different. So I think that Councilwoman DePaolo is making a motion to approve the doc in our package, right?
So the motion, the motion at the last meeting was a motion to table.
Right. But it was the same motion, it was the same document.
It was not the same, no.
All right, all right.
Let me, let me clarify it for the record. This document was sent out by me through the packet. So it's the first, it's the first thing you're seeing. First time it's on the agenda. So the motion in front of you is by Councilmember DePaolo for the for the motion to approve what's in front of you. And Mr. Palmeri seconded. So that's the motion.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, because it was because of the table I got confused. All right. So, Madam Clerk, would you please, Paul?
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's a
Come on, 11th hour, Paul, come on.
Well, there's a motion in a second. I know usually we have a discussion.
Yes, is there any more discussion?
I'll just be honest, I'm disappointed that, you know, we came here with an original proposal from one side, a second proposal from another. We're not listening to each other. There's no compromise from the proposal that was presented tonight. I, in good faith, you know, we can't come out here and say that we want to work with you, we want to work with you, we want to work with you, but then not work with us. So with that, I'm going to say, I'm going to vote no on this, Madam Chair. I'd like to continue the discussion and my request of, request to you as the chair is, I would like to see diversity and inclusion on future agendas for open session where we can get some specific topics. And if you want me to make a motion after this for that, I will. If you want to just agree to put it on, it's great. But I think I'd like to have standing topics where we can start the dialogue. We have to start the dialogue.
Okay, Chris, go ahead. Chris Palmeri?
Paul, that's, that's, that's not true. I began by saying that Vicky and Val worked together in unison. The second proposal, we had not seen at all. And then Val listened, worked with Michelle and heard some of the concerns raised by members of this council and simply added all the concerns that were raised here back into that document, which was then shared out ahead of time to everyone. So again, I mean, it was even defined in the email, which I sent to you all on Thursday, March 18. And and it did address some of the issues raised from the council. So we are listening and trying to adapt to the concerns raised right at the council.
Madam Chair, with all due respect, this, this document that's provided tonight does not address many of the concerns and Tom Lombardi articulated a bunch of them tonight, as did other council people. I think that this is, this is not anywhere near the the middle of the two. This is more towards the original proposal that I just don't think there's any, there is no compromise in this, in this policy.
Okay, hang on, excuse me, Val, just for one, you know, I know, Val, you want to speak, but Chris Pulis had his hand up first. Chris Pulis.
I yield my time to Councilwoman DePaolo.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. Paul, I'm very offended by what you're saying. And for this reason, I spoke to, I spoke to our chair two weeks ago and said that I would be willing to work with anyone on your side to try to get to a resolution on what was on the table. And then she did share some concerns with me. And she said she would get back to me. So I took those concerns, worked with Michelle Lebrun, and came up with this proposal, which you've had. So we are working, we are working together. And I'm, I'm very offended that you would say we're not working together. We are, and I'm, I would be happy to work on this further, but it just sounds like that's not the the way you want to go. You want to put something on our council agendas and do it that way.
Okay, thank you, Val. I'm going to have Jim Morelli speak.
The motion then with the with the recommendations from Mr. Lombardi, Madam Chair?
And I would like to hear Jim Morelli right now, please. Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that I agree with everything that Paul said. I don't see this as unified decision. As I stated earlier, amongst ourselves, we had disagreement on what this was supposed to say and look like. And I disagree wholeheartedly that this was a joint effort. And further, I would like to comment that I think it's unusual that the Democratic minority continues to pester the police department without our knowledge. So the fact that Mr. Palmeri sent correspondence to the chief regarding this big seminar, I have issue with. I'm on the same board that he is. I have a problem.
All right. Thank you, Jim. All right. I think really, I think we need to call the roll at this point in time. I'm closing down discussion at this point. I don't want, we were doing so well, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to mess things up. I, I want us to be respectful to each other. So, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? The, the motion before us is to approve the diversity, equity and inclusion proposal that Val and Michelle tweaked and 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 sent out in the, in our packet. So
Just, I'm sorry. Can the, can the motion be amended to say that we would continue to work on the proposal? I mean, can I make a motion to, a motion that the council will continue to work on this proposal? This one has a foundation to work from.
That using that, using that proposal as a foundation?
As a foundation.
That's going to be difficult because the the motion is made to approve, that was seconded. So you can withdraw the motion and make another motion. And then we can see where it goes, Val. You know, so is that your desire to withdraw the motion?
Yes, I would like to withdraw the motion.
Okay, and and Chris, do you withdraw your, your second?
Sure.
Okay, so, so the motion has been withdrawn. All right, now, Val, you want to make another motion?
I would like to make a motion that we continue to work on. We use this proposal as a foundation and we continue to work on this proposal moving towards a diversity, equity and inclusion committee for the council.
I'll second again.
Okay, any discussion on this motion? Mark?
I'm sorry, because I just have clarification because I'm in charge of forming, you know, getting the documents together. So are we forming a committee or is this the next step toward working toward the committee?
I'm a little confused too, because what the, how Val mentioned was that, that there, that we were going to, her motion was that we would work on this proposal. And and I'm, you're talking about this proposal that is before us right now, Val.
This proposal, this proposal, I guess my question is, as your, as your manager, do I, assuming, assuming everything passes, do I form a committee? And then the wording of the committee is still, or start, start the process of forming a committee from a document standpoint, but not finishing the document until you guys work on more language on it? Is that my?
No, I'm sorry, Mark. I would say that the motion I'm making is to continue to work on the proposal.
Madam Chair?
Not forming a committee.
Okay, not forming the committee, but to work on a, a, a proposal, a proposal, not this proposal and
Using, but Madam Chair, using this proposal as a foundation because we put a lot of time into this proposal, all of us.
Okay.
It's a good foundation.
Okay, thank you, Val. Paul?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I appreciate that. I think that that's, you know, I'm, I think it's a great step. I, I personally think procedurally, the right thing to do in this situation would be to have a table on this one and then come back with an agreed document. That's, I believe procedurally, that's probably the right thing to do. You know, making them, approving something that's not really approved. I don't know procedurally if that's the right way to go. We can agree for sure, just to start with this document and start to work on it as a team. But I just think procedurally, it's probably
Right, I have a problem with that, yeah.
Is to probably remove them and table it.
Madam Chair, my estimation is the same thing. It's, it's the same thing as approving the document. What am I missing? So instead of approve, instead of a motion to approve the document, it's now a motion to work on this current document?
I mean, if we don't, if we don't agree on the, on the document, I don't know how we can, how we can motion to approve it and say we're going to work on it. I, I think the appropriate thing is to table it procedurally.
Are you making that motion, Paul?
I don't want to do that. I, I will, but I, you know, I don't want to cut Councilperson DePaolo and Palmeri off.
You make a motion to postpone?
Say that again, Val.
You make a motion to postpone?
That's what a motion to table would do. Well, it would put it on for the next agenda with direction on, on, I guess what I'm hearing is the first, this is a very, very strange motion, but what I would suggest is that if you're not happy with the wording of it, but want to work toward the wording, then you would then obviously have to not take action. You table, work on the wording over the next two weeks and then put it back on the agenda. That's how normally it would work. I'm not sure if you put a motion in that says we're approving this document and then we're going to work on it later on.
Yeah.
In my mind means the document's been approved. So Jeremy, Jeremy could talk about that part of it, but that, that would be my only thing. That's why I was just asking for clarification because I'm not sure what what your goal is. If your goal is to, you want to use this document as a base, but want to have a compromise to put some language in, then the appropriate thing is, is that the chair would, would ask for a table and specifically have people work on it. Because sometimes what happens is you table it and then nobody works on it over the next two weeks and then we're stuck here again. So that's
And Mark, I just wanted to say that because I, I just see this as a circular thing. I think that there is a proposal on the table. I think we should have a vote as the proposal that's on the table. If we wish to go further, then that will be another request. But I, I think we need closure on what is on the table before us. I mean, we're just going around in circles. So, Val, there is a motion on the table, on, 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 right now to approve your proposal. Is that correct? Am I, am I getting this clear?
Okay, yes, Madam Chair. I guess my, I was just trying, I was doing that in the hopes of, as the town manager said. If we, if we were going to table it, give direction to, you know, two or three of us to work on this over two weeks and we come back with something. So it's something concrete. So it's not just going round and round. If that's
Well, if anybody, if anyone wants to work with you, Val, they can do that. We don't have to have a motion on the table to do that. If you want to reach out to anybody to see if anybody wants to have another discussion about it and reach across the aisle or whatever. But we have a situation right now with this proposal in front of us and we've gone on for quite a while trying to understand it. And and we're not getting anywhere. So my suggestion
I just want to, I just want to remind you that I did that two weeks ago. I reached out to you and said, is there anyone that I can work on?
Right, exactly.
So I will, I will then, I will make the motion to, I will make the motion to approve the proposal that's, that's on the table.
Okay, and Chris, are you in second? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Pulis? I stand by my comments about being reactive rather than proactive. I don't think we can kick this can any farther down the road. I vote yes on this proposal.
Chaplinsky?
Yeah, I also stand by my comments that this is extremely important. I'd like to do something. Unfortunately, without the compromise on the proposal that's before us, I can't support it. No.
Del Santo?
Very important issue. We are stronghold. And it's a disservice if we put a committee together with nine people that don't agree on something. I don't know.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Stand to my original objections, no.
Lombardi?
These are long yes or no answers, but I'll just say there's some very good suggestions in this document and I appreciate Val's work. And there's a lot of smart people, including Councilwoman DePaolo and others who have spoken on tonight's meeting, who can bring a lot to the council floor, and I look forward to having a discussion on the council floor. But I vote no, setting up a separate committee for that reason. So no.
Morelli?
No, for the reasons I stated prior.
Palmeri?
Yes.
Triana?
Yeah, I can't support this document. So I vote no. Thank you so much, everybody. All right, and the discussion may continue. Who knows? I mean, I, it's a very passionate one. It has been for me for years and it is for Val. So I'm sure that the that the discussion will continue and perhaps we will see something in the future. New business are the tax refunds, Val?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the tax refunds in our packet.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, Bill's second.
Second by Bill. All those in favor?
Hi.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, so I'm going to entertain a, we are going, we need a motion to go into
Madam Chair, motion adjourned to go into executive session, bar and press and the public, but including Mark, attorney Taylor.
Attorney Taylor.
Members of, members of the library board and then those members of the library board will exit and then there's a personnel matter after they exit.
Okay, very good. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you, everybody.
Correct, there's no action after the meeting.
No action out of the
No action after the, okay, thanks, everybody. We'll see you later. Thank you all.